Welcome, everybody, to the Board of County Commissioners of Pickens County Work Session on Tuesday, December 8. And first thing on our agenda this afternoon, we have a Citizen Board Interview. Kurt, I want to get your last name.
String.
I was going to say Strang, is that?
It's Strang.
I was going to say Strang, but that's a different name. So Kurt, thank you so much for applying to be on the Senior Services Council. I have the honor of being the county representative on that board. I enjoy the meetings a lot.
I just had some, I have just had some Novocain working off. I've just come from the dentist, put in a crown, and my Novocain is just working off. So if you don't mind, I'll come a little closer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So Kurt, tell us why you're interested in serving on the Senior Services Council.
Well, I've had a pretty busy career. Patty just gave a little book about it, describes it, because I wrote some stories and historic references for my little group. We have a little group that used to be high-level people who retired from Hilton International, which was my company. We started out very small, three and a half people, and we ended up with 36,000. And that was not just because we were so bright, but because our timing was perfect. We started that business two years after the end of the World War II, when nobody could travel, and all of a sudden, everybody, at least in the U.S., could travel. Twenty years later, the Japanese got enough money to travel. Ten years later, the Koreans, and so this grew. And so we had the fortune of very good timing. And since I retired, I did some consulting work for other people who had an interest in hotels, like American Express, or SAS Hotels, or a few others. And I enjoyed that very much, but I particularly enjoyed my pioneering time. You know, it's great fun to build a hotel in a place like Alizeabu, but you could also build it in Paris, but it's not as much fun. So that's what I did, and since I'm here, been here 48 years, off and on, the last 12 years permanently in Snowmass. When the suggestion was made to me, I thought, well, that would be something interesting to do, and I'd like to do some things that, you know, give back. I have had a very productive and nice career, and Colorado has been wonderful to me, and about 40 years of skiing here was, life can't be better than that. It's time to give something back.
Rachel?
Well, and thank you for applying, as others have said, and I think you've given back in many ways, we all know of, in the different circles we work with. You're a big supporter of the Red Brick Arts and Recreation Center, although that was quite a while ago, and a starter for that foundation, to that effort. What skills do you think you may particularly bring to the Senior Board? Which skills, or which emphasis, what passion?
Which emphasis, you talking about this book?
No, no, for the Senior Board.
Well, the emphasis would be to give some of the benefits of experience to other people. And I have worked with seniors before, and I'm certainly qualified to help the seniors.
Yes.
But that's for you to decide. And my objective is simply to share some of the things that I have learned with other people who may not have had such a broad experience and need a little help. Everybody does.
Yeah, we do. Thank you.
Patty?
I just would like to thank you for applying, and to say that you have an amazing resume. You've done some amazing things in your life, and I think you would be a huge benefit to the Senior Council, even if you're not skiing anymore.
Is that the question?
No. Very astute of you, "No, it's not a question, it's just a comment," but so welcome, is all I can say.
George?
So Kurt, you've spent some time at the Senior Center?
Yes, I did.
And so are there any issues in particular you want to, you think the Senior Council should be focusing on?
Issues? I think one issue is, and I'm not perhaps sufficiently clear to mention that, but I think there may be a problem of communication. Having senior citizens of the county here know what is available to them. You know, it's one thing to read about it, it's something else, and I hope they're, I'm not, wouldn't be the only one, that there are people you can talk to, and, you know, open your mind to somebody. There must be something better than to read about it. So I hope that part of the effort would be to be of help to seniors who are a little bit undecided of what is available to make their day better.
Okay, thank you. Kurt, there are two different vacancies on the Senior Services Council right now with different term limits. The first one expires April of 2017, the other April of 2018. So it would be like a year and a half or a two and a half year?
It's fun.
Would you have any preference?
I just want to be able to be of some help. Timing, I'm going to be here, I'm going to stay here. I travel some, but not a hell of a lot now. It's not as much fun as it used to be. And so that's, I'm open to any, any timing that works for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for applying. We really appreciate the citizens who volunteer their time and efforts to help make us, ours a better community.
I had a lot of time on some other boards, and the time, you know, the time is up, so I'm pretty free now.
Thank you.
So we don't decide today whether to appoint you.
You decide whenever it suits you, I'll be around.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Patty.
Thank you. Patty?
Okay, next we have a discussion of new terminal concept designs, and John Kenny is under the weather right now, and so John Peacock's going to take the lead on this.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. And John Kenny does send his apologies. I can tell you from visiting with him this morning, there's a very good reason he's not here today, so I am going to fill in for him briefly. Before I get started, I just wanted to make a few introductions. Right now, walking around to you, handing out some take-home materials, is Brent Mather. Brent is our architect from Gensler. He will be part of the presentation today, running through the different conceptual options and talking about the process. To his right is Rick Dunkelberg from Meeden Hunt. Rick's been in front of you before. Behind me, and behind the pillar, where you can't see her, is Kate Andrus, also from Meeden Hunt. So the purpose of today's meeting is to review the four terminal design concepts that were presented to the public, and to also review the public process that was used to vet these options. Really what we want at the end of today's meeting is to seek the board's approval to move forward with the two concepts that were supported during the public process for further design and analysis during the county's EA process. And Rick's going to spend a little bit of time, when I turn it over to him, going through that process and how all of this fits in. But before we jumped into the presentation, I thought it would be beneficial for the board and for the public, who might be watching, to give a little bit of background about how we got to this point, because it has been a long journey, really, since 2011. There have been some changes in the program. I thought it'd be good to walk through some of the history to understand the context of what we have in front of you today. And so what brought us to this point really started with a master plan update that started in 2011, and really concluded in 2000, well, didn't conclude. We thought it would conclude in 2012, when the board approved an update to the airport master plan. That update contemplated a new terminal and development of a west-side taxiway and fixed-based operator. In that process, we made the assumption, with FAA representatives at the table, that the airport would continue to be served commercially by the CRJ-700, Q400, or a similar-sized or capacity aircraft. And we also assumed that the airport would be allowed to continue to operate under its existing modification to standards, which allows the airport to operate with a runway, taxiway separation of 320 feet versus 400 feet, because we've allowed only aircraft with a 95-foot wingspan or less to operate at our airport. When the 2012 master plan was submitted to the FAA for approval, we were surprised when that update was only partially approved by the FAA. Specifically, what was approved were the east-side improvements associated with a new terminal area, parking, transit node. What was not approved were the west-side taxiway and fixed-based operator. And a particular concern to the FAA at that point was the airport continuing to operate under a modification to standard, that instead of having a separation of 400 feet between the center line, the runway, and the taxiway, we wanted to continue operating with a separation of 320 feet. The FAA made the decision that they would not likely grant another modification to standard to allow us to operate aircraft with a 95-foot wingspan. And rather, if we did build that at that separation of 320 feet, we would be going back down to what's called a Design Category 2 Airport with a maximum wingspan of 76 feet. When we got that, we talked to the board then about, we need to better understand what the implications of that decision would be, and we initiated a Future Air Services Study. And that Future Air Services Study was really focused on a few things. One was, we needed to understand what the implications were going to be for future commercial air service at our airport if we were to not have a modification to standard, if we were not able to do that. Two, we wanted to understand what physical changes could be made at the airport, if any, to accommodate the FAA standard that we needed to meet the Full Design Group III standards, or if there's any opportunity at all to discuss another modification with the FAA. We learned, I think, two really important things out of the air services study, and I think we'll probably increase it to three. One, that aircraft technology is changing. We learned that the CRJ-700 and Q400, which currently serve our airport, were in the process of getting retired. We also learned that their replacements, while quieter and more efficient, also all had wingspans that exceeded our 95-foot limit, not to mention the 76-foot limit that we would be required to go down to with a separation of 320 feet, and that those aircraft would likely have slightly more capacity. The second really important thing we learned was that the FAA is first and foremost, and this has been true, we've known this always, but their first concern is always safety. And the thing we learned in this study is that the FAA had been operating under a more recent mandate not to grant modification to standards to airports in order to meet the safety standards that the FAA has had established for many decades now. And so that it was very unlikely, if not impossible, for us to get another modification to standards like the one we've been operating under. And the third thing, I guess the third point that I think was really important, is that there were alternatives, there are alternatives for us to physically accommodate those FAA standards by moving our runway and building another taxiway at 400 feet. And so that resulted in an updated airport layout plan, which we began preparing for the board, and the board adopted earlier this year, in fact, for submission to the FAA. In the meantime, while we were preparing that updated airport layout plan pursuant to that Future Air Services Study, the FAA did have funds available for us to begin an environmental assessment process on what had been approved in that 2012 master plan, which was the east-side terminal improvements. And so with the funding through the FAA and the approval on our master plan, we did initiate an EA process. And at that point, we had anticipated doing two separate environmental assessment processes. The first was to look at the terminal area and the east-side ramp improvements, those improvements that had been approved in the original master plan. And then, as we worked through a revised airport layout plan, which would involve improvements to the runway and such, which we had not originally anticipated in the 2012 master plan, but again, to create that separation, it caused changes in the runway, which we hadn't originally planned, that we would do a separate environmental assessment to look at the runway and east-side taxiway improvements. One of the things we learned is, for the public, is that that was confusing. As we launched on our initial EA process, some of the results, you'll see Phase 1 of that today, was that the public also wanted to talk about the runway and taxiway improvements. And so as we've been working on the airport layout plan update and having our discussions with the FAA, one of the things we really focused on were the funding priorities, because there's a lot of change when we added the runway and the separation in with the funding priorities, and how we could have a more logical progression of the projects that met the FAA requirements, safety requirements, the FAA funding timelines, and created a clearer path moving forward. And so that brings us to where we are today. We are preparing to combine the EA processes for the runway improvements, which is widening the runway to separate, create the separation of 400 feet from the center line of the runway to a taxiway, with the environmental assessment process for the terminal, so that we're looking at those two improvements together. Based on the funding priorities for the FAA and the way the projects would be phased, we believe funding will be available for the terminal before it will be available for the runway. And so we are looking first at the terminal, and we're moving into the runway in the same environmental assessment process. So what is in front of you today is really the end of Phase 1 of looking at the terminal, and it's really preparing us to take the next step into the environmental assessment process that'll allow us to look at the terminal and the runway concurrently. Because in order to take that next step into the environmental assessment process, we need to understand what concepts we'll be analyzing in that environmental process. The runway is very clear from the airport layout plan. However, for the terminal, we needed to narrow down to a set of design concepts that we wanted to develop a little bit further, so that we could gather public feedback on concerns that they might have with those concepts, so that they could be adequately analyzed in the environmental assessment process. So that brings us all the way to today. And what we're really trying to do is narrow down from the four concepts that were developed for potential design of the new terminal, to two concepts that will further refine and further develop, so that they can be assessed in the environmental assessment process along with the runway. So that's what we're going to be looking for from you today, is to hopefully, based on our discussion of the four concepts and what we've heard from the public, narrow those concepts down to two. In your memo, we did not make a specific recommendation of two based on public comment, because we are still collecting information from Pick and Connect. So as we get into the presentation today, we'll be more clear about the two options that we feel were pretty clearly chosen by the public, and those are the options also that staff is recommending that we develop further. Obviously, the board is ultimately the project sponsor, and you have the ability to choose whichever concepts you think are most appropriate to move forward.
George?
Thanks for that background, John. When we did the approval for the airport layout plan, there was a host of options that came before us, and from that, it was recommended to focus on one option. So here with the terminal, we have, you start with four options. I'm just curious why you've just come down to two options versus three versus one?
Well, some of it is complexity and, you know, ability to analyze. We do need to bring multiple options forward as part of the environmental assessment process. And so for the entire combined phase, you're actually going to have multiple alternatives, including multiple terminal options, as well as null options. What if we do nothing? That's required, and Rick's going to talk about that a little bit more. But Rick, I don't know, would you, what would you add to that?
And the way that the, well, first of all, a little bit further background is, when we were presenting the 2012 master plan update, this body directed us to look at a minimum of two terminal options as we went into the EA, because there was a lot of discussion on one-story versus two-story, and how big it should be. So one of the directions we had from this body was at least two options to look at in the EA. As we started the EA process on the east side, there were basically four standalone options that we evaluated, and we will carry two of those forward. One of those, we could actually combine with one of the other alternatives as we go through the design process. So there's kind of a mix and match, like John said, as we move forward.
All right, thank you.
So John, did we explicitly decide not to be a Category 2 Airport?
Well, I don't think the board has necessarily, you will decide that, I guess, as you approve or do not approve projects going forward. The direction we had from the board was to try and identify either infrastructure improvements or, if possible, modification to FAA standards, to maintain a similar level of commercial service to what we enjoy today. In order to do that, specifically as it relates to future aircraft technology, we do need to remain a Design Category 3 Airport.
So we explicitly said we want to stay a Category 3 Airport, and that's where we've proceeded from on that basis?
Correct.
And in that master plan, we made a space reservation only, didn't we, of square footage?
That's correct. The master plan is a space reservation for future improvements.
But we didn't have any design concepts at that point?
No.
So it was sort of a square footage, it shouldn't be more than, or more than, I guess?
That's correct. And so for the taxiways and runways, what we had in the master plan was really based on the FAA safety requirements. As it related to the terminal, it's really based on what did we project as peak loads and passenger traffic. As it related to the second fixed-based operator, we really focused on our minimum standards.
And when you talk about the public, what do you mean?
Well, in terms of the public, we had several stakeholder meetings during the master planning process, Michael.
What are the stakeholders?
Stakeholders are going to be really anyone with a stake or interest in the airport, and so that could be on the positive side, or any community member that might be impacted by the airport. So that runs from reaching out to Woody Creek, who has concerns about the impacts of air traffic, to the airlines themselves, to general aviation folks, to the Chamber, to the general public. We had over 91 meetings through the master planning process, everything from formal meetings, reaching out to other public entities and bodies in public settings, to more informal coffee chats at the airport or out in communities, for anyone who had an interest in changes at the airport to talk about what we knew at that point, why we were pursuing the planning effort that we were pursuing, and getting in feedback from them to share with the board.
So it was a fairly open admissions process?
Absolutely, an open admissions process, and that's something that we plan to carry forward as we go into the environmental assessment process.
So when you talk about the public giving input on these four design concepts, those are people who were just interested in the terminal?
Yeah, we had several venues, and we're going to talk about this, but I'll go ahead and preview it a little bit. We had open houses, we had coffee chats that were in different communities, Aspen, Carbondale, Basalt, Snowmass, at the airport. We also opened it up electronically through our Pick and Connect tool to make sure that we're providing folks who maybe couldn't attend the open houses or meetings, an opportunity to view information online and provide feedback online, and that's part of what we'll be sharing with you today.
And we had presentation materials at the airport and the terminal building itself with scorecards there that the traveling public then could also comment on the concepts.
So if they were waiting for their taxi or whatever, they could screen them?
Exactly.
Some remain on the, okay, thank you.
With that, I think I will turn it over to Rick to talk about the process, and I'll give you guys a little more room at the table. I'll be right behind you.
One thing I just want to emphasize, what John said, is that the FAA did come back when they were reviewing the 2012 airport layout plan, and basically say that they were no longer going to allow the modification of standards. And that is something that is a national policy, not something they're just looking at Pitten County Airport on. It's a national policy. It's a national policy that they're being consistent throughout the nation. So they weren't just picking on us, they were implementing national policies, we found.
Is there an appeal process for that at all?
No.
Or is this just a blank statement that there's not going to be any?
That's exactly what it is. They are always trying, as John said, to enhance the levels of safety. And when we are in a mountain environment, things of that nature, they want to make sure that safety is their top priority. And so, they've decided that from a national standpoint, there will no longer be modification of standards.
So all category-three airports have the same standard?
That's correct.
And if you are involved with the FAA, you're going to come up to that category-three standard?
That's correct.
Whether you're Aspen, or Dubuque?
Or Sun Valley, or Manhattan, Kansas. That's correct.
Richard?
And just to build on what Michael was asking, coming up to that modification of standards is really something that's triggered when you want to make other improvements.
That's exactly.
You know, they're not retroactively going to go back and tell everyone, hey, you've got to change this all right away if they don't have a terminal, or runway, or anything like that happening. It's just when you want to improve, which is somewhat similar to us with our building codes or fire codes, you know? You don't get to come back in and say, oh, I don't really want to comply with the 2010 fire codes when I build the house, because, you know, the house used to just be under these codes.
That's a good analogy.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so where are we in the environmental assessment process? This is a little bit unusual from what I would call your normal environmental process, in that based on the direction we had from this board, before we actually started the evaluation of environmental impacts on the natural, social, and economic resources, we needed to have two terminal concepts that we then would carry forward. In the environmental assessment, we are now combining, as John said, east-side development and west-side development. We will evaluate the environmental impacts and what we call the consequences of developing both terminal concepts, which we need to carry forward, as well as the do-nothing concept, along with the runway shift alternative. We're going to look at two of them, one with the parallel taxiway, one without the parallel taxiway, and then the do-nothing. What would be the results if we did not do anything? And that brings us back to your question, Michael, about what would that do from a three versus two standpoint, the type of airport classification we have? So we will be evaluating all of those environmental consequences of those main alternatives. If this were a normal EA, we would start the EA process right now, because we have the alternatives developed through a planning process. We would then carry it into what we call scoping. And that's the next step that we will go through. After the holidays, about the first week of February, we will have a public meeting to present to the public the concepts that we hope that this body directs us to take forward. At the same time, we will hold what we call, and this is a little confusing, what we call scoping meetings. And that's a term of art in the Environmental or NEPA process, which means we will hold meetings at various venues around to gather specific input from the public as to the environmental resources they think are most important to them. And this is different than the design process of the terminal building, which will be a separate design process as we move forward, under a different set of circumstances. So we will be holding scoping meetings. Subsequent to the scoping meetings, then, we will adjust our emphasis on the required NEPA resources to carry forward, and put emphasis on those items which we know the public is very interested in. And I would say, right off the top of our bat, we know that one of the real prime questions will be, what size of aircraft, what type of aircraft can we accommodate here if we implement one of these solutions? And so, one of our first things that we will be looking at, and a challenge to us, will be to meet with the operators, the commercial service operators, and find out from their individual operating specifications, what type of aircraft they could or would operate, you know, on a reasonable basis at the airport. So that then can help us in our design parameters as we move forward.
Rick, could you tell me what a design concept is?
From?
When we're talking about the terminal, and you're talking about a design concept, what does that mean?
We're talking-
Does it mean height, volume, or does it mean finish? Does it mean, what does it mean?
Right now, we are still looking at a terminal building which is 80,000 square feet or less, at the direction of this body. However, the design concepts carry that through. Is it one-story? Is it two-story? Is it more like a stacked story with one story in front, and then higher in the back? Because how do those different concepts fit into the landscape? And how do they also then relate to the other landside facilities? In addition, then, how do those concepts relate to the airside facilities, where the aircraft are going to park in front of the terminal to let passengers off and on? And if we are anticipating that we will be accommodating aircraft with wingspans greater than 95 feet, that will have an impact on how much apron area we need to provide, and how much holdroom area we need to provide. So right now, we're just looking conceptually about what that terminal could look like. As we go through the actual design of the facility itself, a lot of those things will be revisited.
Can I just tell you, what is the existing terminal? 54,000, 52?
Oh, that's an excellent question. Do you know?
I think it's closer to the 40, in the mid-40s, I believe.
I always thought it was kind of comparable to Prince Bandar's house, which is-
It's smaller.
It's smaller than Bandar's?
Not quite as optimal.
And has less bathrooms, too.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess, oh, I'm sorry, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you. The scoping meetings, I think, are really critical, that we well-publicize those, and that anyone who feels they have a question or would like to see something answered, you know, really knows how and when to do that. You know, that's just a very important component of it to me, to raise their concerns, and have you have a chance to address them, if that's possible. I am going to raise something that, you know, maybe you'll get to it further in your presentation, and maybe not, but I noticed that very early on, the concept of jet bridges to the airplanes was eliminated on community character issues and some of the other issues. But I've talked to a few people who've asked me, have you ever tried to load someone into an airplane who can't walk? You know, have you taken a look at our upcoming senior graying wave of people who have real challenges with that? You know, and I just kind of wonder how this conflict between what I would consider to be the Americans with Disability Act, and trying to make sure there's really accessibility, and quote, "community character issues" that are going to say, hey, some people are going to have to find some people to carry them up the stairs? You know, and whether it's disabled vets, our own seniors, our own disabled population, people with kids and baby carriages, that's a real challenge. And, you know, so I kind of wonder how, is that a hard and fast decision from this? Or does that really become answered in the scoping and then the final EA? Or does Americans with Disability Act trump all of that and say, hey, if you're not accommodating passengers with special needs, you're violating federal law, and you're not going to get your grants?
Brent's going to get into that as he does his presentation, but part of the answer to that is, those, and I don't want to sound flippant, but those design parameters are really issues to be addressed more in the design of the facility than in the environmental assessment. The general parameters, we can deal with, but the actual design parameters of how that would operate are part of the terminal design process. And we'll take all those into consideration as we receive them through scoping, and then we will pass those on to whatever design team designs the terminal building. The other answer to that is that there will all, that the Americans with Disability Act always trumps everything. And so, provisions will have to be made to accommodate those individuals.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to, it's interesting, Rachel brought that up, because when I saw that in here, I wrote "yay" next to it. I have never been an advocate for the jetways because of the community issues. I've always understood, having been in the medical industry for so long, the need to accommodate, especially since I used to be shipping the patients there with the broken legs and the long leg gas. And the airports always did an amazing job. Not to say that it couldn't be made easier, but I think that's going to have to be very carefully weighed. And it was interesting to see the information that the community already contributed to that, and pretty much nixed the idea of the jetways for a lot of reasons. But as Rachel said, we'll have to look at it, and if you sit further down the line. But I just want to let my position on that one be known.
It would be interesting to know how many handicapped or disabled people were contributing to those discussions.
John? And I just add, ultimately, the board is the airport sponsor. Ultimately, what projects get proposed to be built are approved by this body. So ultimately, it's going to be your guys' call whether that's appropriate or not. Staff was, this was more, I think, a staff recommendation about what we would recommend, including or not, based on the public input that we received. But ultimately, this is going to be your guys' call.
So I just want to close before I hand it over to Brent, in that we will now be, this is, as John said, the last part of Phase One, and we now will be actually entering into all of the environmental or National Environmental Policy Act requirements from an EA standpoint. And so, the emphasis will shift into the resources and into the evaluation of the differences between these different alternatives as we move forward. Okay, Brent, it's all yours, buddy.
Perfect. Thank you, Rick. Thanks for having me here today. It's been great to be a part of this project for the last year, and through all the public process, and truly the great passion that's in this community for everything that is Aspen in this county. I do have a lot of information to share with you today. A lot of it's very technical, so please, if you don't understand or have questions, please interrupt, because that's really why we're here today, is to make sure that everything's as clear as possible.
I'm going to interrupt your answer. Steve, our prohibition against turning the lights off is gone now, so it might help folks back here to see it.
Nice.
Turn them off a few times, just for fun.
See, haven't been able to do it for so long.
So, the presentation I'm going to share mirrors the hard copy document that I put in front of you. So there's four basic areas we're going to talk about today. The first being the community visioning summary, which is really capturing some of the highlights and key points from all the community meetings earlier this year. The second part is what's happened, which is kind of a group of some of the key considerations that have transpired based on the public feedback and other considerations. And the third is the terminal insight concepts, which is the four that were mentioned earlier. Going through those to make sure that all the different factors are clear. And then the last part is really the outcome of the most recent workshop where the determination or the voting, whether it's Pick and Connect, or the Community Input Committee, or the public at large, provided. So the first part, the community visioning, in February, we had two different workshops, one with the Community Input Committee, as well as the general public, focused on some of the key things, sustainability, neighborhood compatibility, sense of place, et cetera. And the dialogues were very passionate and very thoughtful, and in some cases, contrary to each other. But here's kind of a basic summary of some of the key things that came out of that. The design of the terminal should have a balanced approach, meaning it should have a strong economic lifeline, which is kind of self-explanatory. It should be very efficient, which just means an effective building, and very importantly, a good neighbor to the community, and then be a part of the community, very much integrated. And then, I think, without question, the idea of embracing the outdoors, the idea of views, and inside-out connections, which is something I can touch on in greater detail later, which is something kind of rare in a lot of airports, to have those kind of connections. And then the gateway experience. Airports are generally considered as a gateway to a community, and this airport is no different. And then, connectivity to the community. And there's a lot of conversations about this, whether it's parking or the mass transit component, and it's all kind of part of a larger conversation, of course. So, to touch on what has happened, I think many are familiar with the general area for where the new terminal was approved to be located, in general, based on the 2012 master plan. And this diagram shows it here, it's basically on the east side of the runway and west of Highway 82. And then, here's a diagram that depicts some of the parameters. And because of the runway, Highway 82, the, there's a couple of factors here. So, it looks like some of the shading's missing, but it's included on your printout. But from the left is essentially the west side with the runway, taxiway, et cetera, and then kind of further to the right of that where the aircraft will be parking, which is known as the apron. And then on the east side being Highway 82, and then there's a C dot right-of-way and a hundred-foot reserved corridor. And so that basically leaves the area for work at its widest point, our sandbox, so to speak, at 340 feet. So that's really within the framework that all these studies are being done. Then here's an enlarged portion of that plan depicting the proposed terminal location, which is very much consistent with the master plan. You can see, down below, it's just south of the existing terminal, you see highlighted And then this diagram gets a little technical, but it's important to communicate some of the things that have been determined over the last six to nine months. So, I'm not sure if you're aware, but right now, the apron slopes towards the terminal, so, which is generally not, well, you couldn't get that approved today through a building department for flooding reasons, so there's issues with water, and it's generally a safety issue. So as a part of the runway reconfiguration, the apron itself will be raised to minimize and reduce that, to get positive drainage away from the building, which is clearly a benefit. This diagram here depicts, really, if you look, this is the runway itself, the west side, and then down here to the left is Highway 82. It shows kind of the conceptual extent of what that will entail. So closer to the south end, where it meets, it will be more or less at grade at that point. But as it slopes down, we're trying to reduce that, because right now, the site slopes about 2% from south to north, which, over the course of the runway, is about 150 feet, which is not insignificant. So, and merely along the length of the apron, we expect that that enlargement to create this flat plinth will be 12 to 18 feet. So that will essentially provide a site and a framework for the terminal to function properly and have a better relationship to the aircraft.
Does the 12 to 18 feet depend on which design, like the one that is more like 500 feet long is going to be 18 feet drop? The two shorter versions would be more 12-foot drop?
Absolutely, Steve, that's very insightful. That's absolutely correct. So any questions on that?
What's the relationship to the grade of Highway 82, then, of that platform?
The next diagram touches on that, actually. So if you see here, it's at its most extreme position here, with Highway 82 being here, at 18 feet, that would be roughly 26 feet higher than Highway 82.
And that's just the platform?
Correct.
Which is grade?
Correct.
That's not the top of the building?
And then it gets a little less gradual through the middle, at 22 feet, and then 19 feet through here. So, does that make sense?
Yeah, and none of this is relative or creating the site for this from the old terminal site. This would be going-
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but I, you know- Yeah, that's what I thought, but I, you know, just where the apron is moving, will the apron be moving eventually closer to where the old terminal site is now, for the new terminal?
No, all of this work is being done, kind of isolated from the main, the existing terminal, which is generally over here.
Okay.
So--
I just wasn't sure if some of this was needing to be regraded and used as part of the extended apron for the new terminal.
Eventually, this area and where the existing terminal is would be regraded, but it isn't necessarily the apron, so.
Thank you.
So, does that mean that we can continue to use the existing terminal during the timeframe we're building?
Oh, yeah.
Because the community is very concerned about impact to travel and all that during-- okay, just want the community to hear that. So, that's one of the ideas about moving the terminal up valley a little bit, is to better utilize the grade factors and to allow the existing terminal to operate during construction.
Yes.
Not that there won't be some disruption, but--
Yes, that's an excellent point. I think it's really the site and the parking where the disruption would--
Right, right. Thank you.
You're welcome. I guess the topic already popped up earlier. What's happened, the jet bridges. So, I think to kind of summarize, Rachel, you touched on a little bit, the pros, which is why they were being considered in the first place. Separating passengers from the ground crew operations is certainly a safety issue, which is generally preferred. And then there's less risk of passengers being injured to and from because of inclement weather that occurs, as well as, of course, people that need assistance on those lines. The cons is it's dramatically more expensive. Most of the public's comments came with regard to the perception of the airport. They perceive, many of the comments were that the perception is that it's a big city airport. People, the community likes being able to smell the fresh air and see the mountains when they arrive. It's part of the Aspen experience that you cannot get in most airports, as well as the views from the gate lounges themselves when you're waiting. The jet bridges would eliminate a good portion of the views and that experience. So, there was very little support, at least in these multiple conversations with regard to jet bridges, which is why the recommendation would be to eliminate them.
Yeah.
On the slope of the tarmac, downward slope from the up valley to the down valley, is that 2% slope figure allowable within the guidelines?
For the apron?
Yeah, for the apron.
To my knowledge, yes.
Yeah?
Yeah. So we wouldn't try to level the whole apron and then have a big drop-off at the end. We would have it slope down and go smoothly?
Correct.
The real design consideration is the slope of whatever connector taxiway goes off the new runway as it approaches the apron. That's the critical slope from an aircraft standpoint.
Steve?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, I just wanna be clear. I do understand all the cons of this, and some of the reasons why people would be opposed to it. I just think that, you know, an additional pro is literally just not that less risk of injury to passengers, but, you know, less both inconvenience and somewhat of a degrading experience, if you're not able to have rolled on with your own existing wheelchair and instead have to have people carry you up the steps. Those sort of things are not about risk to injury as much as they are to dignity. And, you know, I do a lot of kind of extensive travel for the board and other obligations, and, you know, it's getting to be more and more passengers that I see who are disabled, and it's just the aging population. And I, you know, perhaps they don't come to ski, but we know what our own senior boom is going to do here in terms, in the state of Colorado. I think the percentage of seniors and those over 65 is gonna go up to 20, 25% of the population in the future. And so it's a pretty big issue. So I would just like to know, when you walk away from this alternative, what are the accommodations? What are the accommodations that will be made that are just, you know, hobbled together every other flight, you know, and that we're constantly prepared for appropriate treatment?
Fully noted.
So I wanna bring that back to the issues of having jetways, and what that does to the design of the building. It's my understanding the building would have to be higher, which would then create more visual impacts, which we're already creating by having to have the surface of the base for the building versus the level of the highway. It's already gonna be 26 to 18 feet higher. And so would we have to then raise that building even higher to accommodate jetways?
Yes.
Not something that's significant, because we've already heard a lot from the community as to the visual impact of the new terminal. We heard that about the patio shelters that you can see through. So I think we're gonna definitely have to keep that into consideration.
I've seen in some airports, they'll have a long, instead of steps going up, like the old-fashioned way--
Right.
--they'll have a long ramp that's way longer, but it's something--
Yes.
--you can wheel, the wheel tear up really easily, or that's how they accommodate the people who, or people could walk up it who wouldn't be able to climb the steps.
Correct, and those are--
Is that maybe what we would end up with if we do, don't do the jetways?
That's an immediate solution, for sure. Absolutely. And I think, you know, the last part, and you talk about more expensive, which is just sort of anecdotal, but when you have things like that in a smaller community and they break, a lot of times, there's no one here that can fix it.
Thanks.
Sure, you're applying someone from Salt Lake or Denver, so it can create a lot of operational issues as well. So, any other thoughts on jet bridges? So, structured parking. For those who are familiar with the master plan of 2012, it included a parking structure of approximately 1,200 cars, or 1,200 cars in total with the site. Over the last nine months, the financial plan has been reevaluated, and it is no longer a part of, at least, the EA consideration for, because of that. And so that, essentially, at least at this point, that is where we're at. So the directive at this point is to analyze in the EA 662 parking spaces, which is more or less just matching what is there from an existing standpoint. Part of what these studies are doing, in terms of the arrangement of where the terminal would be, and where the curbside is, et cetera, and this dashed area here is where the parking structure is being considered for the EA, is to make sure that any of these terminal layouts can accommodate one in the future, because there will be one needed at some point unless something dramatically happens with people's driving habits.
Steve, can I, I just wanna put this on the record. The Upper Valley new future highway access, which would be signalized, which would mean the removal of the existing signalized access to the ABC, that's an area that many years ago, the Board of County Commissioners was pretty definite about not having, about leaving that. So I just want that to be, that's an issue, I think, for the people at the ABC, especially the North Forty homeowners. I just wanna keep that on the record, that that's gonna be up for probably a great deal of further discussion, as far as moving that intersection, and what that does to the whole traffic flow. I know we have an access plan that the county approved, and that has been coming and going. That intersection's been a one, it wasn't in the other, and now it's back again. So just to let you know that that's probably gonna come up.
George?
I'm sure this will come up later in the presentation, but I just sort of highlight it with the Raptor access. One of the goals when Raptor put their BRT station there, along with the underpass, was looking at a future connectivity to the airport, vis-à-vis probably a straight tunnel somehow, that may go to the parking lot or right into the terminal. So that, is that part of the EA process, or that's sort of adjunct to it a little bit?
That's adjunct to the EA process. We just need, in the EA, to clear that area for space reservations. So when and if that is developed environmentally, it's clear.
Okay, since this would be a tunnel anyway, that probably would impact any of the design elements. But the goal is to have a, an opportunity to utilize whatever mass transit may be in the future, if it's rubber tire or not rubber tire, to get in and out of the airport, vis-à-vis that stop, and utilizing the underpass.
Yeah, and I, can I, and that's a really good point. I happened to run into Ralph Trapani at the airport in Denver, and he wanted me to be very clear about the effort that had gone in to lining that new underpass and Raptor stops up to where the new terminal would be moved up. So I think that's a really good point, and Ralph wanted me to make sure that that was brought forward. So thanks, George, for reminding me of that.
And during the public process, a lot of these, this comments and feedback was certainly brought up. The public's very much interested in having these connections, however they manifest. So, really, the, so the summary here is, the amount of parking to be provided based on the EA study and how we're proceeding is below the recommendation in the master plan. And so there's been some sidebar conversations about how that may be accommodated through off-site parking configurations, or strengthening the mass transit system and connections. So, now onto the terminal in site concepts. So, I was touching on earlier, there's four different concepts that the design team went through. I'll go through each one in a little bit more detail. Essentially, there's a single-story concept, what we call a split level, which was meant to address some of the grade issues more effectively. The nested concept, which was an attempt to reduce the size of the terminal on the site. And then lastly, the two-story, which would have the smallest footprint.
But I didn't see in the presentation, but with all these concepts, did you put a square footage to each of these?
They're all 80,000 square feet.
They are all 80,000 square feet, regardless?
Correct.
Okay.
We wanted to keep, not compare apples and oranges. So, yes, they're all based on the 2012 master plan program.
Well, the 2012 master program identifies space reservation up to 80,000. So, what you're saying is, using all these designs, you just decided to maximize the entire space that was put aside for reservation, which was 80,000 square feet?
Correct. Now, that does not mean, this isn't saying that that's what's going to be built. It's important for the EA to be accommodate, be able to accommodate up to. So you can always go smaller, but during the EA process--
But aren't you, I'm sorry, but aren't you, aren't these concepts, these design concepts architecturally based on an 80,000-square foot footprint?
Yes.
Okay, well--
That's to get the clearance through the EA. If the actual architectural design came back in later at 72 or 68, we would be cleared for up to 80 if there was ever expansion.
Right.
That's what I was trying to clarify. I thought, that's why I was wondering, each of these concepts, regardless of the design, they could come in with a smaller footprint, but you're just utilizing the entire space. It was just a little confusing.
For the clearance, for the study of impacts.
Because that's, that is an issue that came up again and again during the master plan process, in terms of trying to assure the community that what we're doing is we're just placing a space reservation up to 80,000, but doesn't mean we're gonna use it. And so, per my question, I was just curious, the designs that you're presenting to us today, are they actually utilizing the 80,000, or that's just a process to go forward? It's a little, I'm a little confused on that.
In a NEPA document, you can always build or develop less than what you evaluate. And so you try to evaluate the maximum reasonable size that you would impact. And then when it comes down to actually designing those facilities, you can always go much smaller. That's another decision point, which this body will have somewhere down the road. But we need to clear it environmentally so that we can build it. But you don't have to build what you clear.
Okay.
Can I, I wanna add to that. I think I understand that concept, but in moving forward with any designs, one of my issues has been the possibility of a phased, a phased design. So people are concerned, we're gonna build for Easter Sunday, and we're gonna have all this space out there, and do we need it? Or can, is there any way, we've got such great architects in this, who are working on this, that it would be great to see if we could design a building that could be designed such that we could add on to it in the future if need be. Unlike our current facility, that's impossible to even rearrange the interior, let alone the exterior. So I would hope that that would be something we could be thinking about as we move forward.
That's a great point, Patty, and I think, you know, all of these concepts fit within that vein. I think there's a, there's not an infinite amount of expansion available just because of the site conditions and--
Right.
--this and that, but there certainly is.
I think that would probably be well-favored in the community.
So you ready to talk some concepts?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good to see the meat of it.
So this is the terminal concept one, which is the single-story concept. To kind of orient, so this is a section through the site. This is the west side of the site. You can see the airplane and its parking location. On the right side, we have Highway 82, and the hashed area is the 100-foot right-of-way for C dot. And so this kind of refers to that 340 feet that I mentioned earlier. The playing field from which to fit the terminal, as well as the parking. Some of the, the basic parking configurations lie for 120 feet. And so here is essentially the terminal itself. And so you can see the line across is raised. The dark shaded area is the earth and the existing grade.
Natural gray.
So, in order to accommodate the apron being properly graded, and the raised element that I talked about, it sets up a one-story building being quite a bit higher, creating kind of an awkward condition with the site itself. And I think, you know, to the comment earlier, Steve, this would be the most extreme condition because of its size and it's taking up the most space on the site. So I think, you know, part of the perception is that a one-story would have the least impact, but because it is longer, it's raised up, it's not necessarily the case.
Well, also, we kind of have a long, skinny airport now with two ramps in the middle of it. It's not all on the same grade. And this concept, I mean, this, this view is showing the cross-section, but if you look at it the other way, would we have to have two ramps in the interior of the building to accommodate it, or--
No, it would be all on one level.
Or you're just gonna build the level up--
Correct.
--probably filling in--
Correct.
--the whole length of it, so it's all one-story, one grade on the interior more?
It would be a lot simpler than the existing terminal.
Okay.
For sure. So aside from the, those issues, you can see because of the height of it, there would be a lot of grade to make up on the site itself, in front of the terminal, on the curbside, which will cause, we, a lot of the budget attributed to that. So, that's kind of the long and short of the one-story option. And I think it'll be a little easier to understand some of the others if I kind of move in. So here's a site plan of that. You can see the layout, conceptual layout of the terminal here, with the different spaces, just south of the existing terminal. And then the same access point roadway, and then a distinctly larger curbside element, which is certainly popular with the public And then the next building concept, too, is the split level. So here, in terms of the layout and configuration, from a floor plan standpoint, the footprint, it would be the same size. It would take up the same site area, but the exploration was to minimize some of the infill and import of material to fix that. So what we've done is split, really, what you see here, this public half, the front of the terminal itself, the ticketing, the baggage claim, and drop that down to more of a conventional grade level consistent with the site. And then the gate areas would still remain at that location where they wanna be, which is directly adjacent to the apron itself. So, by and large, the same, but it does solve kind of some of those major issues, at least regarding the cut and fill.
But that does result in an interior split level difference.
Yes.
So there would have to be some way of going from the bottom to the top level.
It would be in one direction, not throughout, along the length.
Rachel?
Yeah, since this caveat is put in several of the different designs, I'll go ahead and make the statement now and carries over for others. I think that it's important that there also be flat-out ramps, because you talk about-- because you talk about when mechanical equipment fails. And I go through airports all the time and the escalators are down. And it's one thing for me with stairs and suitcase, it's something else for somebody else who's handicapped. And, you know, I don't even know how they move these people around when their escalators fail. So it would be, you know, stairs, escalator, ramp, you know, redundant systems.
And a well-designed ramp can make for a nice experience for everyone, not just people who need it. So the last piece of this concept that is stronger than the first one is because this front part is lowered down and if you look at sightlines from Highway 82, it would reduce the overall perception of the height of the building from the highway and from the surroundings, if that makes sense. So any questions on concept two?
Just for, put into context, for both these firsts we just saw, given the current terminal size, what would this look like? Would it be eight feet taller, lower? I mean, is there some sort of context you could relate to the current terminal for the public?
Well, there's a lot of factors because the existing airport terminal varies in height. It's down further, so it's a little bit lower already. But I think within the context, and that's partly what these studies are for, because they're not determining the height of anything, they're just talking about relative heights between because of all the different factors. But if you look at this concept, it wouldn't necessarily have to be significantly taller than what is there right now. It could be comparable, depending on how it's actually designed.
All right, great, thanks.
Right. Now, the grade issues, you know, of the previous option, raising it, all these are going to raise it up to a certain extent because of the site issues, but, you know, at least getting this point here more consistent is going to make it comparable or more comparable height to the existing terminal because this area in the back is more or less screened from the highway.
But even if it's almost the same height as the existing terminal, it might have more visual because of its location?
I would agree with that from the south side.
Yeah, so, because we're changing it.
Correct.
Thank you. You got me thinking here, guys.
I mean, I think the, there's parts of the existing terminal that have nice volume and then there's parts that are fairly constrained, but, you know, that's more my opinion, that it could be slightly taller. But that's why we're talking about one-story, two-story.
Right.
Because these are all factors for you to consider for the project going forward. So the site plan is really identical to the others because it's really just the step across here that changed. It still takes up a lot of site area, creating that high point, higher point down here.
So the stepped-up part is only the smaller rectangle, which is the holding area? That's the only part that stepped up on this?
Yes. And then the third concept, which we call the nested concept, is kind of the next iteration of that. The intent here was to do a couple things. One is to further reduce the amount of grade that was needed of the perception of the airport being raised up, that 12 to 19 feet, by further dropping it down and creating essentially one and a half, two levels. So the gate lounges stay where they've shown on the previous schemes, but we've tucked underneath the idea of other various elements underneath that. Mechanical, some other service-oriented things, back of house, to really reduce the footprint on the site itself, if that makes sense. And so by nestling this all down, the overall perceived height of the building is the lowest of all four options. So I think the last kind of piece that makes this successful is it has the best opportunity to integrate with the future structured parking because it is lower. There's opportunities to create a little bit more synergy between the two and some covered areas and some covered walkways. And then here's the layout. You may be able to perceive the difference in scale relative to the site coverage, which is really the big change here. I'd say it's probably approximately about 20% would be 20% less.
What is the length of the terminal compared to the first, the other two plans?
I knew you were going to ask.
Or concepts?
I do not know off the top of my head. I apologize.
When I was looking on the pick and connect site, I printed that out and I was actually got my engineer's ruler out and was measuring and I don't recall those numbers right offhand.
We do have that information.
Kind of compared to see.
We can certainly provide that information.
It's, I sort of recollect that the A and B one, or the number one and two concepts were maybe around 500 feet long and this is maybe 320 feet or something long, something like that?
It's probably closer to 400, I'm guessing.
400 feet long on this?
But I think we can provide that information because we do have that specifically.
Okay. On this, I know this is kind of like a Lego block exercise, but would, when passengers are leaving to go out to the plane and going back in, this one, you have three different Lego blocks there. Would just the part in the middle be the holding area or would actually the whole thing? Or is that just not decided at this point?
Well, we do have more specific arrangements, plan arrangements. But what you're seeing is really the underside of that first level in this plan. So essentially, the gate lounge would go the entire length and be one space. Does that make sense?
Okay, so the, it would be the holding for the building?
Yes.
On the upper level that's on the, on the apron?
Correct. So essentially, read like this all the way across. And in a part of the comments from the public with regard, you know, I'll kind of, I won't say jump ahead, but at least give you a little bit of insight, this was the highest rated scheme from the public from all three different sources, for all the reasons we just talked about. But in large part, the gate lounge area would have views out each direction and frankly, in all four directions, depending on how it's designed, which was a big part of people's feedback, aside from the idea that it's smaller. So the last option is the two-story concept. So this one, the pros, it would take up the least amount of site area. So therefore, it would have less impact from that standpoint. Because of being two-story with, here's kind of the arrangement, being pushed out to the front edge, clearly would have the highest visibility from the highway or from any direction. And the gate lounge would be similar in elevation to the others. And there's certainly some opportunity for growth here as well. And then this particular option, really, it's hard to say if it would cost more or less, but it would, in some ways, be faster to build, which could be a consideration. But nonetheless, it does solve the similar grading issues to the previous concept. But that's kind of the big picture.
Could you go back to the last concept?
Yes.
One more. One of the things that we heard, which I thought was interesting from the public on this one, was that several people commented on an outdoor restaurant experience over that part of the terminal building from the lounge area. And they, you know, several people thought that would just be a fantastic opportunity, which we hadn't thought of as we were going through the concepts.
Doing, well, I sort of was thinking of that too. If you have a broken roof line, it's more visually nice, but if we had the possibility of adding on, maybe not do it at first, but maybe do it at first, something about half of that. So you still have the broken ridge line there. Makes it look smaller from highway and yet we could gain some really nice usable space there.
So when you said the building concept four, two-story was the least favorable? Is that what you said?
No, it was actually the second highest.
Second highest, okay. I missed, I heard you. That's what I thought.
Oh, I thought it was tied, the second highest was tied between concept two and four.
Well, if we're going to jump ahead, we can jump ahead a little bit to the, it was comparable to two. So here's kind of, just to kind of touch on real quickly, what we did. We provided a scorecard and the backside had opportunity for comments. This was on pick and connect as well as our, the kick committees and the public, really looking for feedback and voting on which option performed the best as a good neighbor, operational efficiency, passenger experience, views of the outdoors, and then inside and outside spaces, like Rick had just pointed out, that's an example of that. And then ground transportation accessibility. So that's the lens through all the comments and how we arrived at these recommendations.
And then did you, in all these recommendations, did you have any sort of landscaping ideas that might lessen the impact of whether it be a split or two-story?
I think we've received various comments from the public on what that could look like. But in terms of where we're at in the process, we have not necessarily explored that.
So would that help, so if we're looking at, as one of the options, I think is recommended, a two-story, that becomes part of the EA and the scoping process in terms of how you might mitigate that extra story?
That, what our intent is, once these are narrowed down to two, we then will put some sketches and some renderings together and different options for landscaping and all those amenities that could be done.
So some of you jumped ahead to the outcome and so the voting. So number, concept number three was the highest rated in all situations for the reasons that we stated earlier. It's kind of a, really more of a tie between concept level two, the split level, and the two-story concept. So the split level is quite similar to the nested with maybe not as many valuable, it's maybe not as successful. But, so those were kind of the three. But through kind of further dialogue with, with the team and some of the, some other feedback from the community, there was a recommendation, I apologize, this may be reading a little bit small, was really a hybrid of concept three and four. So it's essentially taking the two-story element of the nested concept, but raising up that holdroom area to be completely on top of the second floor, or excuse me, on top of the first floor, making it a little bit simpler and a little bit more functional and easier to add on to in the future. It would also make accessibility to some sort of rooftop amenity accessible without any extra effort. And it would also allow for future expansion, similar to what was just mentioned, without further complications. And so, yes.
Well, and so the decision before us today is whether to take the design team's recommendation of these two concepts forward.
Yes.
Okay. And I can support that. I don't want to go backwards to the long single or anything else. And I'm sure that as you continue to work at this, I look at this a little bit like the county's facilities project. We're talking about Lego blocks and cubes of space reservations. And I can't wait to see when we get to further refinement and I'm sure some more innovation can come out during that timeframe. This obviously doesn't look particularly exciting, but I'm willing to move these two concepts forward.
Steve?
Yeah.
I'm going to agree with Rachel on that. And I really have to say though, like the first concept, the three and four hybrid really does offer a lot, especially if we can phase with that. And I think that rooftop amenity for people who are waiting to board their planes is huge. For the community to be able to go out there, take a deep breath before they get on a plane and fly back to Manhattan, Kansas would be great. I think that's really, really important. It's a first impression and it's a last impression that that airport offers to the community. And I think that that's huge to be able to provide for that.
One issue that we haven't talked about at all, some people might be getting more of an outdoor experience than they wish when they get off their airplane, the shorter the terminal is. There are six planes lined up for loading. The ones out on the end have a farther distance to walk to get into the terminal. Now, the way I look is the drawings you have to.
Well, I think at a high level, without having a very specific design, that's true. But right, that's also predicated on a single entry point. I think there's really no reason why in this new design that every existing gate could be accessed. So there's, and that's the way I would do it. So to me, the travel distance will be quite a bit shorter for everyone based on that. And if there was a single entry point, then you're absolutely right.
Plus, it would depend on how many planes were coming and going at the same time. So during the day when we have lesser flights, coming and going, they would be, chances are, they would be coming in closer to the terminal than the ones when we're busier, they'd be filling all those gates.
Yeah, I think on the average, and then John Kenny talks about the couple times of a day when there's a
It's crazy.
There's a window of opportunity when more planes want to leave in order to make connecting flights. So the first would be first thing in the morning, you might have six planes all lined up waiting to load people on.
But that doesn't happen all day.
Yeah, that's not all day.
I think that's a good point and I think it's something that we'll have to address in final or design decisions. You know, because on the one hand, I like the idea of multiple entryways, less walking. On the other hand, out of the limited 80,000 square feet, I don't want too much taken up with redundant interior passageways.
Yes.
So we'll just have to see how that plays out with our design experts.
Rather have less square footage that's smarter.
Yeah, exactly. And it's not redundant.
It was a great presentation. Thank you very much.
One, one other thing, if we're limited to the 80,000 foot and we ended up doing this design and we wanted to build more over there and still stay within the 80,000 foot restriction, would we have to shorten the building to make that happen? Would we, I mean, it's like playing around with the height.
In theory, yes.
The width and the length of the building and how many levels there are.
And if you do that too much, you almost get back to the two-story.
Mass.
Right. You know, that's one of the trade-offs we have to look at.
But if we did, say we did this, the three-quarters, I was reading that as three-quarters, not three and four. And then we wanted to add more on, you know, partial lounge area or something up there in the future. Would we have to go back and do a supplemental EA at that point?
No.
If we were adding more square footage than 80,000 or, I mean, whether, using that as the figure?
No, because we're going, we're going to, what we call clear, we're going to get environmental clearance on more area than we need to construct. Because we've also got to clear all the staging areas for the construction materials and all of the work that's going to be going around the terminal building. So all that area will be cleared environmentally. So in the future, if you want to do more, the only thing you would ever have to do is write a letter or two to make sure that something hasn't happened from a resource agency standpoint, if they've changed their regs. But there'd be no more environmental documentation needed.
And Steve, when we're talking about expanding a lounge area, it's open air. I'm not thinking about a restaurant that's closed in it this morning.
You're thinking of like a rooftop patio.
I'm thinking of a patio. Yeah, and that, then that could be reserved for a future need. But I'd rather see us build a smaller terminal with space reserved for future need that gets us to 80,000 rather than going bigger than that. I mean, 80,000 is a lot of square.
That's huge.
And I don't think we're going to, we're going to go there in this first round.
Yeah, I'm concerned about, you keep on throwing around 80,000. I mean, that's, that's a space reservation, but that again has nothing, perhaps nothing to do with what the actual size of the footprint of the terminal may end up being. And I just, I just want to make sure the public understands because you keep on talking about 80,000.
I'm not, I'm saying that's the reserved amount. I'm not saying that's where I want to go by any means.
And for me, the idea of being able to have a hybrid and stack and allow for future expansion makes a lot more sense than if you're using a single level and then trying to do expand. Because frankly, that's how our current airport. to do expand, because frankly, that's how our current airport was expanded by piecemeal. As, as the years went by, we added on instead of being able to utilize a better design. So I, I don't want to see us getting into that same bind again.
No, and that's, you know, one of the, several comments we got from the public addressed that. Part of their comments, they expressed in terms such as right sizing, making sure we are prepared for the future and we're not hemming ourselves in, because I think they had that concept in mind 15, 20 years from now. If we need to expand the terminal, we want to make sure it's designed in such a manner that it's easy to do and it doesn't look haphazard, it doesn't look like it's just thrown together.
Yeah. George, that's a, that's a point well taken, because three, three or four years ago, everybody was comparing our airport to Santa Barbara's.
Right.
To see how big that terminal was and we didn't, you know, we were comparing.
We didn't want it.
We didn't want the 80,000 square foot terminal and I, I don't think we want it even now, but I, I get your point about reserving, doing, reserving the space in the EA. Rachel?
Yeah, you know, I, I also clearly want to right-size and I think the design and the appearance of the building has a lot to do with the acceptability. You know, you can have a really poorly designed building and it's 60,000 square feet and people hate it, and you can have a 70,000 square foot building and it's well-designed and people like it. So I, I, I understand the issue that's being put out here and I don't want to over, overbuild, but I also want to make sure that we're not so concerned about that, that we really shortchange what can be inside the airport. And I'll go back again to the experiences I'm having and seeing a lot of remodeling and retrofitting of older airports where, you know, amenities exist that we, we really haven't discussed at all interior. But if we make it so small and so tight, we're not going to have that opportunity to discuss later, such as kids' play areas where there's some stuff for kids to play on. Well, you know, in Santa Barbara, you know, unless they have fog, they're going to be taking off most days. Here, we have times where passengers are stuck in our airport for three and four hours. And if there's nothing for the kids to do and they're climbing over the plants and the chairs and the main thing, people go nuts, you know? But we haven't talked about, should there be a small area where there's, you know, stuff the kids can play on and, and amuse themselves while waiting? The other thing that I've been seeing a lot more of in the airports is, you know, the kind of internal kiosks and sales of different products within the airport. And we haven't talked about that yet, but I'm sure it's a pretty significant source of revenue to those people. And that might be an additional way in which we could have some local artisans able to cooperatively exhibit their, their work and create some, you know, local character within the airport. And so again, I, I, I don't want an ugly-looking building, but I don't want to make it so small that at the end of the day, we're saying, well, where are people supposed to hang their coats?
Well, and that, that's an excellent point, and that's why we've been trying up to this point to say that 80,000 square feet is the guideline.
It's a maximum.
As you get into the design process, those issues which you just brought up are all going to be discussed and, and concepts internally are going to change some. And so we don't really know exactly how big it's going to be at this point. And there's a lot of those issues, I mean concessions are becoming more and more important as a revenue source.
Yes.
And places for kids to play and all those kind of issues are, are to the forefront of terminals which weren't there 20 years ago.
Yeah.
And so we need to be flexible.
I agree. I was stuck at the Boise Airport for not too long ago, and I was amazed to see they had pinball machines. Yeah, no, they had some pinball machines and people were playing them while they're waiting for the planes to, you know, but I mean, you got to think about that experience of waiting with nothing to do.
Stop machines.
So, so it sounds like you, you, we've got a recommendation to go forward to the EA. I'm just, so the next step in the process, as you said, Rick, you're going to be doing some scoping. At what point do you anticipate coming back to the board with, with an update and perhaps further input and comments?
We, we probably will come back to the board after, number one, after we have our scoping and after we, we refine some schematics on what these two concepts would look like. That's probably going to be spring.
Okay.
We'll have either one or two public meetings along with our committee meeting between then, and that, not counting the scoping meetings which we'll, we'll have.
And if you don't mind me jumping in, throughout the process, we're going to be doing updates. So as we have citizen input committee meetings or what have you, we're going to continue with that practice that we had during the, the master plan update of coming to the board the next day and just talking about, you know, giving an update, what was the discussion, what did we hear, and that sort of thing. So you're going to have both the, the formal kind of touchpoints that Rick was talking about as well as kind of the ongoing updates as we, we move through the process.
Yeah, I think that's important to make, to keep this sort of a fluid and dynamic process and not having to all of a sudden get, sort of get a shock and surprise and have to make comments and may sort of set it back a little bit.
And there's going to be, you know, to the whole discussion about building size, this is the busiest, busiest building possibly on the western slope of Colorado. I, there's just no question about it.
Maybe a couple hospitals.
They're not even as busy anymore.
I, I'll bet you we've got more people coming in now, actually, yeah. And so a lot of what we're going to be doing is refining the projections that were made in 2012 so we can have an informed discussion with you guys about what does surge look like, what's the passenger experience going to be, what are the, the safety considerations to try and really have an informed discussion about the square footage? Because I know outside of that context, about this being that busy of a building, certainly busiest building in our, you know, region, it, it's really difficult to know what a right square footage kind of size is. So those are going to be, we're going to be able to bring those back to you throughout the, the process, so there's not that big surprise at the end, George, which I think is what you're, you're saying.
I just want to get this on the record. Rachel was talking about the concessions and all those things that go on and the advertisements. I want to put a little marker in here about some thought that's going around the community about doing something with the dig in Snowmass and trying to get public donors to come in and pay the price that we would be making off of the Rolex ads and the fur ads and the jewelry ads, to put something in that was a welcome to, look what we have here, and try and actually get on loan some of the actual bones from the dig at the airport as, as kind of an entryway. I think that's something that would really highlight our airport, highlight our community. It's an amazing find out there and it would be nice to be able to share that with the cup, with the public coming and going. So I'd like to put that little marker in there for future thought. You probably have already heard that, but I want to.
And I just note for the board, foregoing revenues too, or to reserve space for those types of public uses, is something that's at this board's discretion, so it's something to talk about.
Right. I think we could, for my thought, if we could probably find some nice donor out there to help us out with that.
That'd be better.
I thought so.
I just had one more thought. We're going through a major struggle to provide more secure waiting area right now in our current airport. And if this is the secure waiting area here with this concept, you know, we could bring that room over farther that way in the concept. We're not set, you know, we're not locked into that width of a room. And I want to make darn sure that 20 years from now, the commissioners then aren't trying to figure out how to provide more secure waiting area in the airport.
We can reserve that space on that rooftop for your secure area. We can phase it in.
And just to make sure, just to make sure that whatever secure waiting area we're providing, that it is way more than adequate compared to what we have now and to provide for future growth and five-foot snowstorms when everybody's sitting there for hours in the airport trying to get out and, you know, whatever, whatever things might, might happen.
Duly noted. Thank you.
I just like to remind everybody that throughout the EA process and throughout the design of the terminal building process, there are at least a dozen or more points that you all will be making decisions that, that you can change your mind as we go down the road. And nothing's a final decision until the very, very end when you accept the last grant to start building something. I mean, it's all, we're, we're not going down a path which you can't change. And so that, you know, we're trying to make these incremental decisions as we go along, but nothing's finalized yet.
Thank you. So did you get direction from the board for concept three, four, and hybrid?
I'm, I'm particular, I'm not really fond of the long, the long building in the concept one and two, which that one represents.
We have to move two forward.
But to compare apples, to compare the two pretty much different concepts, I think we need to compare those in the EA.
Yes, yeah.
If we have two things that are more similar, it's going to be harder to compare them really.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm confused. They're asking for two options. Are you just saying you want to have four options, all four options?
No, no, no.
He's saying two. He's going to accept these two.
He's going to accept the two.
Yeah.
Three and four.
This one's the, the concept two's the longer, the building's longer, probably looking from the highway side.
A little bit.
It's all, it's, it's longer, the, the, one on top is a shorter building looking from the highway, because it has a two-story element to it.
Just so I'm clear, I, I, the recommendations are to look at concept three and four and then maybe a hybrid?
As a hybrid.
It is a hybrid. Three, four hybrid.
And then concept two as our second concept, because we have to.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, my mistake. I was looking at recommendation one as those two different options.
No, no, no.
It's a hybrid.
Of those two.
The second story isn't nested so much as.
Oh, okay, my mistake.
Yes. Let's rephrase it, a hybrid of three and four.
Yes.
Yes.
And moving the other one along, because we have to move two forward.
Yeah.
Yes.
The two that are pictured, or the two that we're looking at.
Okay, then one final question from me is, was it, who was it who came up with this choice? Was that a combination of the design team or consultants and John Kenny sitting down or who, you know, who came up with the three, four hybrid concept and all of that?
That, that was a combination of the information we got from all of our public outreach and the comments we received from them. And then our design experts taking a look at a little tweaking of those. And that's how that was developed.
Okay. So it was a combination of, based on citizen input?
That's correct.
And working with the consultants and with, I don't know, at least John Kenny or some airport staff?
Yes.
Doing input into it and.
Correct. Because I think, you know, building three, concept three was the preferred unanimously, and then two and four were comparable. So, you know, the, and because three and four are more similar, it seemed to make sense to make those the hybrid. You know, the other option would be to do three and four and make adjustments to three. But, you know, we felt, to your point, the biggest way to get the most contrast and bandwidth was to do these two scenarios.
So you took the good points of four, combined it into three?
Yes.
Okay.
And now we're going to move those two forward?
Yes.
Okay. So what's the process here, John, on, on this? We can give a thumbs up now, but is this a thing we need to formally vote on in a, in a resolution?
No. This is, this is really administrative direction in terms of which options to bring forward. If, if the board wanted to change these options right now, this would be the opportunity to give staff and our consulting in that direction. But I think we've gotten very clear direction now to, to move forward with these two concepts into the EA process, and that's what's going to be communicated to, to the public as, as we move forward. With that, we, we still want to just go through, I think, next steps, right, Rick? As far as, or you feel like there are.
Yeah, well, just to reiterate, the next steps will be presenting these two concepts to the public, again, getting more feedback. Also then, holding the scoping meetings in the various venues, getting those well advertised so people know what's going on. We, we, we tried to find some venues in January, but January's so booked up because of the X Games and other things going on, that we're going to have to push that out into February. And then we'll get the comments back from the public on the really interested issues they want, and then we'll proceed on with actually starting with the preparation of the environmental document itself. We'll develop the purpose and need statements and we will craft the alternatives chapter and then bring those back to, to this body for your review and comment.
Okay. Everybody, any more questions from the board? Michael?
So, you know, the most interesting thing to me is that really what this, is the grade of the apron dictates everything. So we, in spite of our best efforts, that grade of the apron is where we begin our project. And that's what, what we've got here. And so we're limited.
I would say that's probably true, yeah.
Yes.
And, and the existing grade then of the.
Yeah, so that, that, that beginning grade of that apron.
That's right.
Is what dictates essentially every concept here. And it's very hard to deal with that when the community itself would like the airport to be invisible.
Right.
So, so when you're at that grade, there's almost no way to make the airport invisible. And so, you know, except for maybe length. So the community has to come to some sort of understanding about that, it seems to me, in order to reconcile themselves to this airport. And, and that, that grade is based on safety primarily. So, so that's, that goes back to rearrangement of the runway and FAA's major concern issue of safety. So it's interesting. So the, all of these are, are variant of that grade.
And you don't really realize that if you're out there looking at it until you actually start looking at elevations to see what that difference is. It's, it's hard for the human eye to, to catch that concept by just standing out there and looking at it.
It isn't hard if you're at the end of the runway and you're, you're at the same grade as the plane's taking off. Actually, you're not, but for the first time, you're really, you're there with the, with that large, large plane taking off. You're right there, you're parked with them. You're stuck in traffic, they're stuck in their airspace.
That's right.
It's interesting. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
We appreciate your time. And we don't sit back, everybody have a happy holiday.
Yes. Thank you. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Okay, our future agenda calendar, Tony?
Yeah, I wanted to spend a minute on next week's calendar, because there are going to be some open houses around the.
Tony, can you guys?
Could you do our discussions outside of you? Need to have further discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye, thank you.
In, in, in regard, there's going to be some public meetings talking about the lease cancellations coming up next week. I think one of them falls on, on the 15th. I think some commissioners have expressed an interest in maybe being at those. The, the big thing that we have in the afternoon is we had planned to bring the Courthouse Plaza remodel and expansion discussion on design alternatives forward tomorrow. As the board is aware, we're going to be doing a public outreach component with that, and we want to bring those design concepts forward and similar to what we did here today, talk about basically how, how the public input, what would inform your decision on, on giving direction on a design alternative. So it's an important one to have, I think, as many commissioners here for as possible.
That's on Tuesday?
It's on Tuesday, the 15th. I think we have one of those, the, the meetings on the lease.
Rachel was thinking of going to DeBock, right?
Yeah, and so I was just looking at, so it's kind of an awkward agenda, because we have the open space and trails meeting also there, but I'm wondering if it wouldn't make more sense to try and do facilities in the morning and maybe move the budget to the afternoon since we've pretty thoroughly discussed that.
I think it's up to Rachel. She's the one who's going to be missing it. I think it's up to Rachel. She's the one who's going to be missing it.
Well, I'm very comfortable where we've gotten on the budget process, you know, and so I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say.
And it's second reading, so.
Maybe flip those and do facilities in the morning. We probably start at nine a little earlier, just to make sure we have enough time to go through everything. My concern, Rachel, is.
Yeah.
The, the, missing the facilities piece. And then we have the Open Space and Trails meeting. It's a kind of awkward scheduling right now.
It is awkward and it's also weird that, it says break for grassroots TV to set up and lunch at 12 o'clock. And yet we're already doing budget stuff first where we need to be on TV and then set up earlier.
It's because you guys do a executive session with Open Space first. So we, we need to do some moving around here.
You move it around to fit your needs there and I'll, you know, be there for as much as I can.
But you're comfortable, budget goes in the afternoon and get facilities moved up to the morning so I can have as many of you here.
Sure.
Because that's going to be an important discussion, I think.
Sounds fine to me.
Okay.
And then Wednesday, George, you're going to go, Wednesday's Carbondale? No, Glenwood.
Monday is Glenwood, so that's easy for me. And Wednesday, if we get out early, we'll see.
Yeah, it's Wednesday, the 16th. It's Carbondale. So we'll just have to see when the meeting ends and where we're at.
Yeah. I'd also be looking, we, we may move it out to Tuesday, December 22nd then just to talk about the chair rotation and such for next year. That's really all I have for you on future agendas right now.
Yeah, because I, I've got a few things. One, I didn't see anything in terms of the rotation for the chair and the board assignment that we usually do and ready to go for the first meeting in January.
Yes, I think we'll review that on the 22nd. We, we just pulled up the, the last memo on that. So we just haven't gotten it added to the future agendas yet. So.
But we got.
And then we'll have that scheduled for action. You guys need to take action on that in January. I think it's a, usually a second week in January.
The other things I have is, can we have John Kenny come in here and give us an update, the public an update as we're going into the holiday season, if and how the construction at the airport may impact anyone?
Yeah.
And then the other thing is, Patty and I were down in Basalt last night for the first public meeting for the presentation on the kayak park. And that went really well. They're planning on having another public meeting in January. And I thought it would be good for us for the BLCC to meet with the Town of Basalt trustees in between these two meetings in January, just to have a, a good discussion. I thought we had talked about having something set up.
I don't remember that.
Scheduled for that. The ring a bell, John?
I don't remember setting up another meeting.
Well, we talked, we talked about having a facilitator specifically for us to meet with the Town of Basalt trustees.
Oh.
Regarding the kayak park.
Regarding the kayak park. I don't know that we had, had set that. Let me talk to John Ely because I think that happened while we were talking about the kayak park. Or were you?
Yes.
Was it the joint meeting? It was when we were talking to John about the kayak park?
With the joint meeting. Because again, the first public meeting was last night. Basalt is, is going to hold a second public meeting some point in latter part of January. At least that's what I heard last night. So we may want to meet either just after or just, or just before that meeting. But at some point, I think we should meet with the Town of Basalt and have a good discussion with the trustees. So see whether we can hammer out any issues and concerns and looking at some of the comments that the public has provided.
Steve?
Yeah.
I, I appreciate you bringing that up. And I really couldn't make it because I'd sat through the jury duty all day. And it's like nine hours of nothing. I was like beat and needed to reconnoiter. But what I'm wondering is maybe after the second meeting would make more sense because if it gives the design team a chance to work on some of the issues and, and, you know, in between the first and second, any new concerns and new issues coming forward, then we can meet with the town council. And that would give them time to work out any new, you know, presentation or issues or how they're resolving some of the issues in time for the third public meeting. And so maybe if John can just communicate with Mike Scanlon and see about when we could set that up sometime between the second and third makes a hair more sense to me.
Is Basalt hosting the second meeting? Because I know they were brought in on the meeting last night, but they, they had, I didn't look at their storyboard that they had up to see what, what they're, because they, they're kind of really looking at that whole reach, I think. I didn't know they were going to.
I think we'll need to have Lisa and.
Let's clarify it, yeah.
Talk about, yeah.
Yeah. But thanks for bringing that up, George.
If, if we could have a more relaxed, a little more time to spend with the town trustees when we do meet with Basalt. Because every time I've been involved in the meetings, it's been.
Forty-five minutes and then they're on to some.
You know, we're out of there as soon as our seconds are up. And it's never, it's always felt rushed to me. And like, we don't really have time to.
That's kind of the way the mayor runs the meetings. So I don't know how.
Well, I think last time we had a few, more than one topic on for our hour. So.
But if, maybe it's just a matter, if we could get 15 more minutes or something, might give us enough time to have a little more open discussion where you don't feel quite so rushed. And a little more given, take, I think, could be, could be more productive.
Okay. I don't have any future agenda issues.
I don't per se have something on our handout now, but I would just bring up again, we really need to talk about scheduling that retreat in the coming year. I've just gotten a request if we're going ahead and using March 3rd for the QQ meeting. There's other meetings that are coming up. That's a quarterly meeting. And so I just want to, you know, I know how difficult it gets for all of us if we start filling our calendars up before then.
Okay, anything else? All right, we're scheduled for a break right now until 3:15 when Kathy will be in for landfill rate discussion.
Okay.
So. Okay, welcome back to the work session on December 8th. Next on our agenda is a landfill rates discussion with Kathy Hall and Brian Pettit here.
Great. I'm Brian Pettit, the Public Works Director with Kathy Hall, Solid Waste Manager. We were here to discuss a rate increase for 2016. Annually, we analyze our landfill rates and make proposals to the Board of County Commissioners to increase what we call in landfill business, tipping fees. And that comes from trucks tipping their beds to dump materials. But in this case, we analyzed the Boulder Denver Greeley CPI from 2014. And the proposal in front of the board today is to increase our three most common commodities by 2.8%, which was the 2014 CPI. This will increase revenues at the landfill. And even in this time of economic upturn with the amount of material coming into the landfill, we think it's a prudent move for the county to increase rates for municipal solid waste, construction and demolition debris, and single stream recycling products. We think it's a solid recommendation. The last increase the county made was about eight years ago. And it was time for an increase to take place. Rather than do a dramatic increase, we think a more modest increase of 2.8% of CPI would be acceptable to the community and would go into effect then January 1st of 2016. We've had discussions with the Town of Snowmass Village and they have made their budgetary adjustments appropriately. But Kathy has anything else to add?
Yeah. Go ahead, Kathy.
Just to point out, you know, our disposal fees, they fund the overall operations of the landfill. So being an enterprise fund, we essentially operate as a business. You know, and this covers our labor, our equipment. But most importantly, it covers a lot of programs that normally aren't self-sustaining, allows us to be innovative. Recycling, recycling will not cover the cost. So this is going to allow us to build our fund balance and maintain it and be able to maintain these innovative programs even in an economic downturn.
Patty?
Yeah. You know, when you look at the numbers from the market analysis and price comparison, you know, we're already higher than the others. And so now we're going higher than the others again. So that was one concern. But if you look back over at the graph you gave on the front page of your memo, the 2.8 increase for the municipal solid waste, right, MSW, is, it's a dollar fifty. And, and so, and then if you look at for the construction waste, it's a dollar, two dollars. And if you look at the single stream recycling, it's a dollar. So if you look at that, those, that amount of increase versus the, this other graph, because I was a little shocked thinking, why wouldn't we want to go higher when we're already higher? But you look at the, the 2.8, which is really a minimal increase. And the benefit kind of, I believe, outweighs that. I wasn't, when I just read this, I wasn't sure I was going to support this. But in actually looking at the amounts of increase based on per ton, it, it's really minimal.
Rachel?
Yeah, and, you know, certainly, we are an enterprise fund, but we're also subject to market conditions. And I think you're doing a good effort to kind of place ourselves in the appropriate range within the market. Yeah, I, I think Patty's point is a good one. And I kind of thought of it myself. And then I also thought a little bit about, well, you know, that's not the only cost for someone who is going to be doing this hauling. They also have to think about wear and tear on their vehicle, gasoline costs and the driver's time.
To go that far.
To go that far to come back up. So I would imagine that these rates still kind of calculate out to be closer to a wash or a break even, you know, and especially if you don't have that many pieces of equipment, you know, you want to keep them in service and coming back and repeating the load rather than only having three loads a day to South Canyon. You could have five to Picken County. So I, I think this will work out. And if it seems to not be working out, we can readjust the rates. The one comment I'd also have though is after reading through this memo, I think it's really important to try to minimize the acronyms. Or, or, you have the one, the roll-off construction and demolition acronym explained, but until Patty had said municipal standard waste, I was thinking, what is MSW again? And things like that. And so, you know, I've, I've mentioned it to others before, but really, you're writing the memos for the press as much as you're writing them for us because they tend to get the packets first and then disperse the information to the general public. So it's really helpful to, to write it with that in mind, that this is your conduit of information to the general public.
Thank you.
George?
I got a couple of questions. When we went through the, the proposal for us to take over the landfill, we had, you had a projection in the budget over X amount of years. It's going to show $2 million savings over 10 years. That was done prior to looking at this additional revenue source?
That's correct. They only looked at the expenditure side of landfill. They didn't look at the revenue side.
They didn't look at the revenue side at all. And even, even at the, the budget we're going to approve today, that didn't take, this is.
That was savings just on the expenditure side based on the contract price that we would have had to have a contractor of the landfill.
I, I think George's question is different though because we're going to be doing the, the budget approval for the landfill.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious now. You're, you're coming at us right when we're going to start to approve the budget. I'm just curious why this wasn't part of that overall budget. So we, we could have seen how that was going to cash flow out.
Yeah, that's a, that's a process we need to get aligned better for all of our fees, George. We, we don't have a consistent process around all of our fees. So that's something that we're talking about internally. How do we line that up better with the budget process? Because similarly, community development fees have come to you guys separately, the solid waste fees. And so we, we did want to get it as close to the timeframe as, as possible. In this case, really what we're trying to establish is more of a practice of making sure that we're keeping up with inflationary pressures. So we don't come back when there's a downturn or change in activity or what have you needing a big price increase because we haven't kept up with increasing costs. Right now, our, our volumes are high. Our, our budget as it stands right now probably isn't so dependent on this particular increase, but it's more trying to be more anticipatory of, of the future and making sure that we have smaller increments that our customers can plan to better. And so you're right, probably would have been better for us to be having this discussion back in June and July and October. It's something that we're starting to try and align in the organization better.
I've got a few more unless you're on that point.
No, no.
You note, Kathy, that Garfield County has a higher rate for out-of-county use. And so I just wondered whether you looked at a different sliding scale as well since, given that we've got a tremendous increase in terms of tonnage for C and D, is there another way to look at this in terms of doing a sliding scale, perhaps preventing less material coming in from out-of-county, which would only, which would also perhaps extend a lifetime of that landfill a little bit longer. And if not, we would generate a little more revenue. What are your thoughts on that?
We didn't look at it. We get a lot more waste than rifle, the Garfield County landfill does. It's a difficult thing to track. Some trucks are mixed, you know, it depends on their routes. So it is really a difficult, you know, at the scale house, you have to determine where it came from. But that is something we could look at in the future.
Yeah, instead of, you know, if, if we're going to continue to look at increasing rates, perhaps there's another way to do that. Because, you know, frankly, when, when we, when we increase rates to the haulers, I'm assuming all, all that's going to happen is they're just going to pass it on to their customers of that increase. So. The last point or comment I'll make is, as you noted, our recycling program will continue to be subsidized although we've been able to cut that down when we will go on a single stream. But when we're looking down the road in the future, I think the ability to maintain that recycling program and minimize that subsidy, we're going to have to look at partnerships. And we've had that conversation already. But I think as we go into next year, we're going to have to have a more serious conversation.
We're going to set up a work session. I think we're shooting for January.
Mid-January.
Mid-January at this point to come back and talk because we do have, we have very little consistency amongst our partners right now in terms of that participation. And I do think we need some policy direction from the board as to how you want us to approach that. You know, is it, is it about absorbing the costs? Is it about having a discussion about the service level that we're willing to provide up to a certain point? There's all kinds of options that, that you can look at. But right now, those discussions haven't really gone very far with some of our partners. So, well, we'll have to talk about that in January and, and see. I think some consistency amongst all our partners would be important there.
Oh, Michael, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I was, initially I was glad to see this because, because I've been proposing of increasing on an annual basis rather than this lurching that we do. And we do it in all departments. You mentioned community. Lurching to, and then making a small increase, 2.8%. And you said it's not in the, in the, I couldn't find it, at least in the memo, over eight years. I think we've increased. That just doesn't work. I mean, it just doesn't, it's not a, it's not a way of anybody would do business. Government gets away with it. But, but it's not a good way to do business. So we need to have it throughout our, our departments when there's fees that we keep, we keep level, at least. We don't have to, we don't have to overcharge. But we have to keep, we have to keep current with what the current costs are. And if the CPI is, is a good way of knowing that, then let's do that. And let's do that in community development. Let's do that throughout the county rather than say, I'm going to raise it 2.8% over eight years. That, that, that's just, you know, three tenths of a percent over a year per annum. That's just not a good way of doing things. So I'm glad to see this. Hopefully we're able to spread throughout the county.
Thanks. Michael, also, just so you know, the road impact fee is raised based on this strategy every year and has been. every year, and has been since it was put in place.
Right, so.
That's good.
That is good. And it's, it's good to do it throughout the, throughout our fee structures.
Rachel?
Yeah, I was going to tie on to the point about the work session on recycling in January, and I, I think that's great, and not sure we can solve it all in one work session, but at, at the very least, I want to make sure the context also includes what do our partners have for the waste haulers' requirements related to recycling? Because I, I can see easily where if I was in the town assault board, I, I'd start to object to $3,500 a month worth of subsidy to keep the recycling center opening and all. But on the other hand, I'd look at, well, it's the same way we can accomplish those goals of community recycling without having a recycling center. And one of those is the, the waste hauler ordinances, and, you know, perhaps some of these guys need a little help showing the, the model legislation that's out there that other communities are already using, or that they could adopt. And so, it's not just about who pays for the recycling center or not, and, you know, it's, it's how else to accomplish the goals of the maximum recycling in an affordable way. I mean, really, I think it may have been when, when you were off-board, Patty, where we actually started charging for dropping recycle bowls at all. It's very low, it's less than the rest, but it wasn't like this is something that's free, because it's not, it has a cost associated with it. And, you know, and I think we, we also should continue to look at that. I know, you know, some areas don't have those franchise powers to institute those sort of things in the contracts, and maybe that's where the county is. But I just also would just like to know, in a matrix form, who's doing what, you know, and how they're doing it? Thanks.
I'm a little bit afraid of doing an annual increase based on the CPI. It's an ex, creates an exponential curve, and I just did a real quick calculation in going from 52 to 5350, and then if it's still 2.8%, the next year would be 55 for the municipal solid waste, and the next year would be 5654. So in four years' time, we would have an 8.7% increase. It's greater each year. The curve's going up faster and faster each year. So I think we need to be mindful of that, and maybe each year, if, if that's the proposal, decide each year whether we want to do that CPI increase or not. Maybe we just want to do a portion of it some years, depending on, you know, I think we should look at it every year before actually doing the increase, because we might be getting way far ahead of the neighboring landfills and pricing ourselves out of the market, or maybe the community kind of goes into a recession, which Denver Boulder really are not in a recession, but a lot of Western Slope still is in a recession. So we have to be careful of that also, that, that we aren't charging too much for the service to our people. You start charging too much, and then you start getting more people dumping in gullies out off of county roads and things, is what happens in other communities across the country.
Our hope is, would be to bring this idea each year to you in this format, just earlier in the year, so hopefully, early fall, be having this discussion in 2016.
Yeah, but I, I do agree with adjusting it, you know, but if rate increases justified, do it in, in small bites every year is better than waiting ten years and then jumping it way up would be more powerful.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Steve, and that is the process, that we'll take a look at it annually and look at it both with place within the marketplace, CPI, and then actual costs, because that's the other equivalent, you know, there. And it's oddly an argument opposite of yours, but in listening to some of the concerns about the state fiscal budget, and why Tabor has us so much and not, is it's because it's dependent on Denver Boulder CPI, and they measure the inflationary cost of toasters for resale, not the cost of health insurance that you have to buy for your county employees or other wages in order to attract, or the cost of heavy equipment when you need capital replacement. Those inflationary costs can often be a lot more than CPI. So it's got to be a combination of the two, or the three, the three factors. Actual costs, and are we reserving enough, and things like that, our place in the market, competitiveness, and then, you know, not falling too far behind in what, what the CPIs are.
Right. If I, I think the important part is to have a regular check-in with some basis where we can have the, the discussion, because I, I agree, CPI actually doesn't always relate to, to what it is we do. But oftentimes, we've made changes and such that make us more efficient and that sort of thing. But the object is that we're having this discussion on an annual basis, and we're making what incremental adjustments are, are justified, so that we don't find ourselves in a pickle with a, a big adjustment somewhere down the road that we planned appropriately.
And we should forget George's point about how this really goes to the budget for each year cycle. I think that's important.
Yeah, and that's all we need to do to George's and Michael's point, I think, for, for all our departments. We're not there yet process-wise, but it's something we have on our radar screen.
Great, perfect.
Pretty much in agreement to go with it this year and look at it again next year.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have facilities update.
They're here, they're hiding behind the post. Yeah, they always do that. They always seem to get right behind the post.
It's hard, because, you know, it takes out for me the whole seating area.
That's why we won't have any towels.
I know, I knew that was going to come up.
You've already got that happening.
I want to have a hologram thing of a pillar that we can project into the middle of the room if we want.
And we can put people behind it just in case.
We, we actually have the running joke that we're going to build one on wheels. We're going to roll it around, make sure whoever is in the, the doghouse that week.
Can sit behind that rolling.
We just roll it.
It's not a bad idea.
I think everybody's got something.
So did you get caught in the, trying to get from the parking garage quagmire?
Yeah.
It's crazy.
I just wasn't thinking it through.
No, but if you try to go to Mill Street, both sides of Mill Street are closed.
You know, I'm going to change my format so that you can actually read it. So Dave Detweiler from Facilities, Jody sends her apologies, she's homesick today. So I will give the update thrown together at the last minute. So library, things are going well. I'm going to show you a few inside photos. The demolition is essentially all complete. The old staircase is now gone, and we actually have the holes cut where the new major stair is going to go, which is interesting. And we're starting in on the, the rebuild of all those interior spaces, which is great. This is coming in from the east side in the new entry off of Galena Plaza, looking back into the old library. This is the old set of entry doors right here. So we're actually working on a new and improved solution for how that transition's going to be right now, to have that kind of be a, a nice wow moment. But you can see we're already drywalled, we've got mechanical electricals all essentially roughed in. We kind of go through this period where it looks really boring, because all the walls are gray drywall, and the floors have no colors, and it's just wires and duct, and everything's gray. So pretty soon here, we'll start to see some color, which is great. That's some of the shaft wall of, of getting HVAC up and down through the building. But we're, we're going gangbusters. The siding, metal panel.
He looks right at me.
Is still supposed to arrive on 24th of December.
That's my Christmas present.
It'll be...
How kind of you.
We'll see how successful they are getting into town on the 24th with that.
It's just like that.
But that's the plan.
I'm going to be waiting right there at that door.
We'll start to button up the exterior, and it'll really start to look finished. The timeline is still the same, which is May, April. We're pushing for April. I think we're going to have good luck at getting done in April, a little bit ahead of schedule and moving in May, June. Budget's tracking. There's a few items that have come up that I think we'll talk to you about here shortly. A few surprises in the past three, four weeks that we'll talk to you about in a, in a separate conversation, but overall, it's doing really well.
You know, that's like getting a phone call from someone and says, I have something really important to tell you, but I won't tell you for two weeks.
I'll tell you next week.
You know.
But I'll, I'll just preview for you. We, there, there are some improvements on Mill Street to the sidewalk. They're required as part of our permit that we hadn't anticipated and are planning to fix grade and, and that sort of thing. And then there's another one that I need to explore further about possibly installing a leak detection system, since we've taken some responsibility on the, the roof of the garage, and that had not been anticipated in our original scope. So those are the two kind of areas that we're, we're talking about. Not, not huge, we're...
But we knew about the sidewalk. It's just better than the tease.
Yeah, yeah.
We knew about the sidewalk, that's could happen in the spring because of the slope factor of the sidewalk. We talked about closing the street again and how the impacts to the community that are so tired of that street being closed. We talked about that.
Yeah, it, it was still not in the scope of our, our project.
It was in our discussion, but not in the scope.
Yeah, it was still getting worked out. One other thing I will note, the furniture bids came in today. I haven't seen them yet, but, or yesterday. So we're going to be evaluating those here shortly, and hopefully, that's all good news. We'll be off to the races.
So it's good to see on, on budget and...
Yeah.
Head of schedule a little bit is good.
Again, pretty soon here, it'll really start to, to pop with, with things that'll get people excited. It'll stop being so gray and, and dingy, and it'll start to look like it's finished product, which I think will be great.
How is finishing up the actual plaza and kind of reopening Galena Street and the parking garage coming?
They're, they're on the, the Mill Street side right now, pouring that last little section of the drive. That's kind of been the holdup on that whole corner, is it really gets funky grade-wise as you come out of the alley and make that transition down to Mill Street, and the improvements that we're trying to happen in Mill Street, things just, we're having a really hard time connecting. And so, we've got all that figured out, so they were out there this morning pouring some concrete. I'm not sure if that's the end of it, but I know it's close to that. They'll have that piece opened up. They have to redo some, the city has to redo some of the soil on top of the gar, the garage. It was slightly heavier than what they wanted it to be. So they're going to pull that off and replace it with something a little bit lighter. So that area's going to be in flux for a little while.
Another berm for the golf course.
Yeah. I just have to say that for folks trying to catch the bus, the Hunter Creek bus, you get to the bus stop at the corner of Mill and Main, and it's closed, and there's no way to get to the other bus stop without walking back through Overmire, by then you've missed your bus connection. So hopefully, they'll get that pour done, and the bus will stop there again, because it's really, it's really frustrating for people who get out of the parking garage, can't come up the stairs, they can't get anywhere, they have to go down the stairs, they can't get anywhere. There's no real signage that tells you you have to go through.
The signage is terrible.
And there's, there was no real signage that said you couldn't walk up Mill Street. So you walk over to go up Mill Street, both sides of Mill Street are closed. People were, there was a lot of four-letter words I heard from people who were trying to get from point A to point B, and would get there and have to turn back, and then got here and didn't know where to go. So I don't know if, if that opening that, or maybe you can just keep an eye on it, and if it's going to be any further delayed, we can put some kind of signage out here in front of Tasters that points people not through our driveway back up in here, because it's so slippery and so dangerous, but through Overmire and then from Overmire. It's, it's just crazy, because Rachel and I walk it a lot.
I see the sidewalk on the west side of the courthouse is open again, but where does that lead to? Can people get clear?
It is my understanding that as of this week, the west side of the courthouse, all the way down through to Tasters is back open.
And that'll help, that's...
Yeah, that, that signage, we had signage up there to block that, but it, everybody and their brother moved it.
Yeah.
I, I put it back on the sidewalk no less than 20 times.
You can actually walk around it very easily.
It was one of those, I didn't, I couldn't understand why people felt the need to move it when you could just walk right by it, but that, that's done. That is back open.
The house opened, that's helped us.
Yeah, and I didn't know that Mill Street east side was going to be shut down till I drove past it, and...
East and west were both shut.
Yeah, I didn't...
Rachel?
Yeah, thanks. And, you know, I, I realize this is not a county project, it's, but it's a partner project with us, and, and the perceptions flow both ways about it. If you could pass along, it'd be really great if they had better signage or explanations in the garage, because I, I was a little late today going up and down the maze trying to figure it out, and it has, they have contradictory signs. The one will say elevator access only through the second level, and the sign underneath says elevator closed. Okay, so elevator doesn't work, and it doesn't access us, or doesn't. And then you have other signs that says this stairway closed, use the Rio Grande Stair. And I'm like, I don't know what is called the Rio Grande Stairs as opposed to other sets of stairs, and, you know, they should have a map on those. If there's a given safe pathway that we're keeping more clear, and they can work with their people to keep some more snow mouth on it, that should be on that map. But right now, you know, people are just scratching their heads and going in circles, and it's, it's just not a good impression.
You go down the stairs to go up the stairs, or you go down, up the stairs to go back and down the stairs. We just walk through the parking garage, which is not safe, so.
Yeah.
Got it.
It's always fun, it's interesting.
What it all boils down to is you can't get there from here.
Exactly.
Pretty much. It's like the US Bike Challenge the first year.
Gotcha. I understand. I will pass on that message.
Thank you.
Maybe that will inspire them to get this.
So that's, that's library. The new sheriff and county administration building. I think you're all aware that tomorrow, we have our open house sessions. We have a morning session with the employees only, and then we have a lunch session and an evening session for the public. We'll be gathering input on four different design exterior concepts to see which of those, those groups feel best fit the vision and values that we've established as our project criteria. Not necessarily which one do you like the best, but which one do you think fits the criteria? So we'll be able to bring back to you the following week, on the 15th. We're scheduled for a, a work session where we'll bring you back those options, to show those to you, the feedback we've received, some budget info as, as it relates to those, and, and some sustainability conversations that go with each of those, and some fundamentals that we need to decide in order to keep the design advancing further.
Dave, where are those meetings being held?
Right here.
Okay, for the public.
They're in this room. The first one is at eight o'clock, just for employees only. The second one is from noon to two here in this room. And the third one is from...
Five to seven.
Five to seven in this room.
And then, for those who may not be aware where this room is, it is 5:30 East Main Street on the first floor. It's the commissioner's hearing room.
Sorry. You've been here before.
That's just what I was going to ask. Thanks, Rachel.
So that's the latest on that. We are pushing forward. The, some of the minutia here, which unfortunately, again, you can't read, the temporary spaces, we've talked about those. The elections space in the Ute City Building, we should be picking up our permit today, tomorrow. It's supposed to be ready. So we anticipate finalizing our agreements on that and getting that construction started so that they can move here shortly, late January, early February, so that by the time they take shipment of their new elections equipment, they can...
Put it right in.
Take them right to that space for the, the trials, I guess it is, on the...
Takes a while.
Yeah, takes a while. And then the clerk will be moving to the vector space shortly thereafter. That is submitting for permit, I think, tomorrow. So it's moving.
Dave, one, the clerk and elections all move out of here. Would you start doing any demolition stuff in there or wait until the whole building's empty before starting anything?
We will wait. The only thing we may do still, it's, we're, we're working on it right now, is are we going to cut apart that big counter at the clerk into pieces and move it?
Get over there.
That has been our intention because we know when we come back to the new space, it'll be an entirely new counter and we don't wanna do that twice. But we've gotta get that figured out exactly, where do I cut it and how? And we, you know, it's easy to draw it on a piece of paper, it's a little bit harder to do it. So that's the only piece that we would be messing with in there. The rest of it would stay. We may use it for touchdown space or maybe some short-term off, you know, meeting space.
And you, you may recall that one of the challenges we had was when we were doing testing in the building, we did find some hotspots with asbestos and such. And so I, I think we're gonna opt to have everyone out of the building.
So are we gonna find a lot of asbestos in other parts of the building that we haven't really gotten into yet?
We had a, we had a pretty thorough test on, you know, it, it turns out that asbestos has been allowed back into building materials as a, I forget what it's called now, obviously not asbestos.
Dry filler or something.
Yeah, and it's not uncommon actually to find in the drywall joints and, and that sort of thing, I think these.
Yeah, and they changed the thresholds a while back that what was okay, when it went in place, then isn't okay later. So we'll find it in the drywall mud in, in a lot of these spaces is really what we're dealing with. It's friable, friable fibers, so they get airborne. Nope, that's the intent, is no, no big work. You know, we may be picking around, but.
We may need to store library books in the drywall house.
We may.
That's a good point.
We, we have plans developed for if we have to move out of Snowmass in that temporary space. We're still working on options to stay there, but we have plans available if we do in fact have to move out.
Are we paying rent for the space in the base village for the books?
We are not.
Donated.
Yes, that was graciously donated and appreciated very much, but with the transition, it's, it's, we have a game plan that we can be out when and if we need to be out, but we sure would love to stay. That would be great. Nothing new on courthouse remodel, really, that's, that's out there a little bit. Ambulance barn, again, nothing new. Still a dialogue. We haven't forgotten your, your comments from the last briefing, Rachel, so those are still in our notes to have those conversations. And the, the jail ADA remodel and the fire sprinkler project did, the bids did come in. Jody is imminent to award that. I don't know if that's happened. I haven't talked to her about that in a week or so, but I know that that's getting ready to get going. That's what I know.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Board open discussion.
Yeah, I've got one or two items for you. Handing around a letter that Charlotte had distributed by email. It came from Wayne Etheridge representing the W slash J Metropolitan District. They are requesting reimbursement of fees paid for an appeal. It is submitted under our land use code, section 22050, paragraph C, which I'll just read for you because it's short, request for waiver. An applicant may request that the board reimburse fees for projects serving a public purpose proposed by a nonprofit organization or in order to dispute the fee charged. All fees must be paid at time of submittal and applicant may request reimbursement. And so typically we've done this with special event fees for nonprofits, but within our land use code, it really is written to address any fees can be requested for reimbursement. The board has had different practices since I've been here. I have not seen one outside of a special events fee. Sometimes though, during the special events fees, requests by nonprofits, those have gone anywhere from being reimbursed in full to being partially reimbursed to being denied, depending on the, the nature of the event. It's really at the board's discretion. Right now, the board does have, I think I handed out maybe what was in the discretionary fund to somebody. Did somebody get?
I didn't get it. I didn't get it. Steve's got it.
Yeah, sorry, Steve.
No, you just hogged it.
That was my fault. Yeah, I believe you have 6,500 left in the discretionary fund at this point.
6,500.
How does this benefit the pu, the public?
That is actually probably a discussion for the board to have. I think that'd be one of the determinations that the board would, would need to make in order to, to give a reimbursement. So that's really at your discretion.
Right, I mean, I see and I agree that when we have nonprofits, community nonprofits that come before us who are holding a special event or fundraiser, that, that's a public benefit for the entire community and we refund a portion of those fees. I don't think we've ever refunded total. I think we, typically it's around 50% or so. But this is, this is a, this is an appeal from a, 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 a hearing judge decision on a, on a special metropolitan district. I, I don't see how it fits into benefiting the public at all. I, I'd have a hard time refunding any dollars personally.
Rachel?
Yeah, I have a little bit of a different take on it, George. And that is because W slash J is an affordable housing project and it's deed restricted and appreciation capped and over the years, they really have struggled with a number of different issues about their basic infrastructure and how they've been treated and so on and so forth. I, I agree that this was a discretionary expense that they had to appeal the hearing officer's decision. And if I'm remembering correctly, it seems to have resolved itself without actually, it hasn't, between the two homeowners.
No, we remanded it back to the hearing officer.
Okay.
So it's, it's unresolved. It's something that really is a question of jurisdiction and, and it, I, it has nothing to do with whether it's a, a affordable housing complex or not. It's a whole separate issue.
Is there a metropolitan district?
There are metropolitan districts, but their, their dues are determined by their expenses.
Also, but there's also free market units that pay into the metropolitan district.
Are they within that area?
They pay three times the amount of their dues to be in their district.
Yeah, I mean, this, they were actually in a dispute with their own members. So that's their, that's, it's an internal, it's an internal dispute. And I can't see, I mean, just on a precedent basis, if you were, if you were to have all the special districts have a dispute internally and then you reimbursed those members for that dispute, it doesn't, you know, the, the chaos would ensue. This is not, not a reasonable request.
You know, and, and, and tagging onto the issue of precedence, you could have a homeowners' association like Wyonne who has issues right now with city building codes and, and we could be coming back in and saying, "We're homeowners' association, we're affordable housing and we want you to help pay our fees for a dispute we're having over city land use codes." I mean, it's gets, it would, I think to start a bad ball rolling.
Well, you'd have to ask the city for it.
Yeah, but we're still, yeah. Would the city give us back, ah, yeah, but I, but, you know, just for, but I, I think it would, you know, I'm sorry that they.
Yeah, no, I just had to ask the question and I appreciate everyone's also's background.
It would, it would just, you know, it's, we have a big enough discussion when we reimburse special event permits and, and really trying to find the public, the public benefit, so. I'm sorry that they had to go that way, but that's the decision they made.
How many, how many homes are involved, the people that pay into approximately?
We don't know because it's a metropolitan district. It's not the homeowners' association, so it's very different.
So is it the bigger, like, the, there's different sections of the bollwinkle, upper bollwinkle.
But that's all the affordable, but it is.
It's an entire place, isn't it?
And then it's White Star, is it White Star Mesa or?
Well, no, but it's part of the W slash J subdivision.
Right, right, but then those other units that are included in the special district.
So it may be, I mean, if they divide it up by however many homes it is, it's not gonna be a huge amount of money.
It's in their district dues.
Yes. I mean, I would imagine that these are only part of their expenses because, you know, there's the expense to prepare for a hearing and then there's the actual fees to the county. But I agree with the majority of the board and happy to see them go away.
Okay, that is the direction. And then the only other thing I was gonna do is talk about the workshops tomorrow, but we already did that and so I don't need to do that now.
Yeah, I have one other thing, one thing, I wanted to wish George Nimmin a happy birthday. He skied, he skied, the mountain skied well, but George didn't on his birthday, was that?
He skied better than I skied.
But happy birthday anyway.
He got to go skiing on his birthday.
Have we missed a cake, though?
I know. We missed a Rachel cake too. We're down two cakes.
No, I think something happened with me. I can't remember.
Did we bring it back?
October, I can't remember.
Okay, well, we'll make that up, George.
I noticed on the move-in date on the library is right about when Michaelson's my birthday is, so that would be our.
What, big cake.
Big cake.
Big move into the library will be at the birthday.
Now to the big, big, big discussion.
Okay, we're still in a special meeting for earlier this morning. We didn't come out of that, so we can move right into discussion of the individual, some first readings except for public hearing on September 15th of three different budget resolutions.
I just wanna say I'm extremely disappointed that I got to the end of the budget book and there was no chocolate.
We trusted that you were reading it the whole time.
It used to be a piece of chocolate taped at the last page.
Never found that chocolate.
Everybody else got $20.
I only got that little Hershey's kiss. I will never complain about chocolate. No, I will complain about chocolate.
And we're here today to present three budget resolutions for first reading. The first resolution adopts the 2016 budget for Picking County for each fund. The resolution lists the total revenue budget and the total expenditure budget for each fund. And you will find the resolutions in the very last tab in your budget calendar. And so again, the first resolution shows the total revenue budgets, the total expenditure budgets for each county fund. The second resolution appropriates the expenditure budgets for each fund. And then the third resolution sets the mill levies for the county funds that have the property taxes. So in the budget resolutions, you will see as we discussed through October and November, we have a total county budget of just over $105 million. And then in the mill levies, the property taxes, which are 2015 property tax to be collected in 2016, are $22.6 million. This makes up part of the revenue budgets that you see in the first resolution. On the mill levies, most of the county funds are restricted by Tabor. So on the mill levy chart that you see on the screen and that's also attached to the resolution, for most of the county funds, you see refunds that are put there so that we will not exceed the revenue limit set by Tabor. The two exceptions to that are the open space fund and ambulance district fund, which have been exempted from Tabor and have fixed mill levies.
That's a lot of valuation. There's a lot of digits.
Valuation has gone up 12.8%. This is based on June 30th, 2014 values in order to come up with the 2015 property tax, which is collected in 2016 and then the same valuation for 2017. And then in 2016, the assessor's office will be doing the evaluation, no, in 2000. Right, the new evaluations will be based on a June 30th, 2016 date.
Right.
There's a lot of information in here, but we've covered the budget extensively in our meetings over the last two months. The mill levies are the new subject for you. Are there questions on the mill levies or on the budget resolutions?
I have a few things. First of all, I wanna say you guys did a great job presenting it. It made sense, tying it into community values, county values as an organization was, was really huge. The fact that really the budget increase, the general fund budget increase was 1.5% was, yeah, which is huge. But I wanna point out for the public, when you look at that $105 million number, the public doesn't always see all the funds that are in there. So the actual general fund expenditures for the county is $21,983,000 and the capital fund budget for the county, the expenditures are, was it almost 27? Which was, which was, is a huge part of that total number because of our facilities that we're doing. Just think we need to be clear with the public because when the public asks me what the county's budget is, it's hard, you have to, it's hard to explain all of what's in there. It's very difficult for people to understand what the 105 million is versus the 22 million. The other thing I'm gonna just put on the record, as far as the ambulance budget, I just wanna say that I hope that we have further discussions as the capital expenditures for the ambulance district comes up. I'm concerned about a $6 million figure for a new ambulance barn with the escalation of construction costs and the $600,000 budget request, 300 last year, 300 this year for planning. That's a lot of money for that district. I just hoping that we look at some potential other opportunities out there for housing the ambulance district. We still aren't sure about land costs. I just have been plagued by that, that $6 million number for a new ambulance barn. It's a tough one to swallow, even though I know there's a need to house those pieces of equipment in a warm space, but that's a lot of money for that small district revenue source. And the third thing again is, I just wanna say what a great job you guys have done and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to tag on to Patty, it's a large budget and it's a large book. And the staff did a great job in terms of, as I said last week, in terms of segmenting this and piecemealing it together, but it's a lot, it's a lot of work that went into this. And, you know, the budget really drives our programs and services that the county provides. So from public safety to public health, roads and bridges, com dev, I mean, all of our programs and services we provide the community, the community expects is, is really driven by, by the budget. That's driven by our revenues, of course, and, and I, I say this every year and I think it still holds true, but when we look at the general fund, which is sort of our general operations, not counting all of our special districts and our, our enterprise funds, when you look at property taxes that, that, that we pay on our property taxes, less than six cents per tax dollar collected goes into the, go towards the general fund, less than six cents per dollar. And when you purchase something for a sales tax, less than a penny collected for every dollar in sales tax goes into the general fund. So, so the, the perception that, that the county is, is collecting all this money really is, is not correct. When you look at your tax bill, when you look at all the other special districts and funds that you pay into, you'll notice, at least on my tax bill, the highest that I pay into is certainly schools, K through 12, followed by CMC. So education is a huge chunk of mine, probably 40, probably 50% of my taxes. And then all the special districts, whether it be the library, the fire, the hospital and some of our voter-approved districts, bill levies, which includes. and some of our voter-approved districts, mill levies, which includes open space. But when we look at our general fund in terms of how we provide the basic services, road and bridge maintenance, our public safety, public health, the citizens should be aware that they're getting a tremendous bang for their buck, or even less than their buck for their pennies.
Michael?
Connie, could you explain to me the increase in valuation? How does that occur?
So the assessor's office evaluates all county property and it's their determinations based on their expertise. And I know that they have a lot of laws regarding how they do their valuations. I can't tell you what or how, but they are the ones who determine the valuation. And then I know they have a process where taxpayers can come in and dispute that valuation. That's why we have some abatements.
So, but overall, we've gone up 12.8%?
So there's going to be two components to that growth. Some of it is going to be new development, so items like new buildings built, new houses built, that wasn't included in the valuation in the previous year, those get included. And then it's based on market values for real estate and escalating market value. So you shouldn't take it that values have necessarily gone up 12%, on a market basis. It's more based on what is that new growth plus the growth or decline in some years as we've experienced in the market value. But that's what's going to make up that component. And what I don't know, but we can probably get from the assessor's office, is of that increase, how much is each? You know, how much is attributable to new development growth versus market growth?
Right, it just seems like an extraordinary amount. You know, particularly, talking, we just talked about a 2.8% increase for landfill and evaluations are going. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, there's all these figures, some are astronomical, I think this one is astronomical, some are minor. How do they relate to each other?
Well, I think one of the issues is that it's a period, it's taken at June 30, 2014, based on a prior 24 months to that period. So, while the market went down tremendously, from 2012 to 2014, it went up quite a bit.
So it's a rebound of that?
Yes.
And so what we'd have to relate it to is the previous sort of high value? Let's see what that difference is.
And that's a really good point, and so we'll see what happens the next reevaluation period. I would imagine we're going to, because you're looking at property values now that are going through the roof. I mean, it's unbelievable. So I think we're going to, we're going to see some, again, significant increase. It'll be interesting to see how much.
These are, these are the county mill levies, but don't we usually do some other approvals with mill levies, the Basalt Regional Library and?
Yeah, so the mill levies aren't certified to us yet. I believe they come on the 15th or 16th.
Right, it's the end of the month.
Towards the, yeah, so you'll be seeing those on the 22nd. And it's really kind of an administrative process. So this is, what you're seeing now is a legislative function for you to adopt mill levies for the county pursuant to our budget. And then what you'll see on the 22nd then is all the districts are required to submit their mill levies to us and you certify, you know, that those mill levies have been submitted and that this is what the districts have submitted to us to go on to the tax rolls for collection, because we do collect for all those districts on the property tax side. So you'll be seeing those on the 22nd, right Deb? Yeah, so those will be coming back to you.
So, John, a technical question. We have to be acting as the ASB, Board Directors of the Aspen Ambulance District and the Redstone Ranch Acres and Twining Flats General Improvement Districts. Now, do we need to convene officially as those boards in order to then pass the budget for them?
Maybe on the ambulance district.
You actually do not. The way these are set up is they are component units, is that correct, of the county fund structure? And so you can approve them as an action of the Board of Commissioners, which is what we've done in the past. Is that?
I thought that the library and the 911 were the component units. Deb, is that correct?
I thought we convened as these districts.
The library is a separate component unit. The other districts are blended component units, really. I think if you do something, and then E-911 is legally a separate entity. I guess theoretically, you could convene as those districts.
Or not those districts, though.
Well, the ambulance.
Now, you have just ex officio board numbers for those districts.
Yeah.
E-911, we do?
Our auditors have never had a.
No, E-911 is not in this budget.
We have always adopted as a single resolution for all the funds, which have been discussed separately, and our auditors have not identified. I guess we can revisit that, but I believe you can do this with adopting the resolution.
Rachel?
Yeah, the only one I'd like to double-check on or feel that questioning down to me is with the ambulance district, because I do remember times when we have convened as the ambulance district while we were looking at the budget and things before.
Did we convene the other day as the ambulance district to listen to their budget presentation?
You wouldn't as a work session.
Yeah.
It's just when you're taking official legislative action.
And I know we couldn't do that today because we're not posted for it, so, you know.
Second reading if we need to?
You know, anyhow, I'll let staff kind of go through the mechanics of that, figure out that.
Okay, I think we should take each of these individually as.
Steve, I had a couple comments on the budget as well. I know others have made theirs. Similar to what other people have said, I'd like to just point out that if you look at the transit fund sales tax, which is pretty much a straight path through to RFTA, the transit sales tax debt fund, and then combine that with the solid waste center and the airport fund, that's, you know, clearly about 30% of the revenues and the expenses within the county. And those are major standalone services, separate from maintaining the hundreds of miles of roads and bridges and sheriff and clerk and human services and all the great many other things that we contribute to. So we do have some really large operations that are there for the benefit of the community and that's, compose as the budget. I, too, would compliment our staff on the tremendous amount of work that went into this and wanted to kind of bring back two things that I think are bubbling issues that we should keep our eyes on in the future, and particularly the, at the CCI conference, it was discussed a little extensively, the air nub buds and the rental beds that are, you know, they said that Summit County and the town of Breckenridge have been working in partnership for quite a while. And they started studying this issue in 2009, so they have a real track record. And in 2009, when they started looking for these overnight rentals in residential areas, they had something like, you know, 960. And then the most recent count that they had, and this is off of one website, one page, they have 3,200. And so it's an amazing potential leakage of sales tax. So when you think about your small commercial bed and breakfast or chalet lezel, collecting, paying commercial property tax and collecting sales tax to fund all these areas, whether it's RFTA or, you know, other items. And then the next-door neighbor has that market advantage of, we don't pay taxes, we don't collect taxes, and that's a real issue. And it seems like it's really growing. But beyond that, the assessor says from those areas that once you've actually gone in and rented your property and are receiving some commercial revenue off it, the assessor's office has an obligation to assess your personal property inside the rental, inside the building. It's no longer your home furnishings, it's what you have furnished your home with in order to make this commercial profit. And so it kicks into a whole different level of personal property evaluations going forward. So I think that we need to be aware of that and make sure we're following the laws and we might see a lot more work demand on our assessor's office and disputes about, was that painting on the wall worth $10,000 or $50,000 that's now furnishing my overnight rental of $400 a month or a night? So that's a big one. And the second one to really all of us, our community, the Chamber of Commerce, please, City of Aspen, has to pay attention to is the statewide transportation discussions, because they are still talking very heavily about trying to institute a 1% statewide sales tax for transportation. And I was fortunate to be able to reach Connie to verify my information on this when I responded with a letter, but 1% sales tax in Picken County would be a little shy of $10 million a year. And to imagine that we're going to be spending $10 million a year to CDOT and their most recent plans had about $1.5 million in the next 10-year plan for the Basalt Underpass, that's crazy. I mean, we could be financing light rail to the airport with $10 million a year. And I, first to acknowledge, we have to contribute to the greater CDOT system, but it really is a matter of equity and magnitude as those discussions go forward. But if we are not active parts of it, if Basalt and Snowmass Village and Aspen are not active parts of this conversation going forward, we're going to find something on the statewide ballot without a lot of input that's really going to be a Robin Hood sales tax from our communities and greatly inhibit our ability to take care of local needs. Thank you for the moment on that.
So I would just been looking down through the list of the different funds that we're approving the budget for and approving the mill levies for. And I think if we didn't have any local government, people would invent almost every one of these things because they're really vital community functions that we're providing. And I'm not going to read the whole list, but some of the things on the list are the solid waste center, the airport, the library, the transit, which goes for RFTA, our Healthy Rivers and Streams Fund, our Housing Fund, Open Space and Trails, the ambulance district, the Healthy Community Fund that funds dozens and dozens of nonprofits, the translator fund that does our local TV and radio stations, Human Services Fund that helps dozens and dozens of people who are in need of help, the Road and Bridge Fund. All these things are really, like, really important to the community that we're talking about and raising the money for, you know, making the community better by doing that. So that's what we do the budget for is, it's very important and it's doing very important work for the community.
Should you entertain a motion?
I would take three different motions, I think.
Yeah, we do each separately. I would like to put a motion to approve a resolution summarizing revenues, is that the first one, right? And expenditures for each fund and adopting a budget for Picken County for the calendar year 2016. Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the first resolution. And is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then let's.
I'll make a resolution, I mean, I make a motion to approve a resolution appropriating sums of money to the various funds for Picken County for the 2016 budget year. Second.
Well, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to go for three. I'm going to motion to approve a resolution levying general property taxes for the year 2015 to help defray the cost of government for Picken County and its special districts for the 2016 budget year.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And when will we be having second reading on these items and public comment?
That will be next Tuesday on December 15.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn our special meeting. Second.
All in favor of adjourned the special meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do we have any other?
We do not have any other items unless somebody has something, we didn't bring up them in the discussion.
Did Jeanette have something?
Sure. Did Jeanette have something? Well, she was here for the meeting.
She's here for the special meeting.
For the minutes.
All right, so thank you, Grace Ritz.
Thanks. See you guys.
Thanks, Jac.
See you.